No, there was no Zoom. No Zoom today.
That's right.
No Zoom for you. Whatever you want to do. So tomorrow is... Sure, here's that. Right? Yeah, well, let me... Nope. Yeah, I was trying to, I was trying to bring up the agenda. Which I think I should still have, actually, should have loaded. See that? Look at that. Yes. Meeting agenda. I've had it. An overall comparison would rather be this. So like, I have this CES internship. Shall we set up that rule, Tommy? Six fifty here. One more point. It's... So, yeah. It's, you know, that back memory size. There's water on. Should have soaked stuff in it. I mean, I like the background. Right? Yeah. And... Yeah. Here's another one. Have a little concentration. Thanks. For this part here? Yeah. Yeah. I can't. Um, let me go here. I don't know why. You guys are listening. So I just need this to wrap. Okay. All right. Nope, that's over. All right. You ready? Are you ready? Yep. It is going to kill me. Look at it. Everyone ready? Ready to go? Yep, excellent. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the April fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Carver School Committee. Thank you to everyone that's here to join us. We don't have Zoom, so there's no feedback from computers, so... That's interesting.
Chris is up on the board. He's playing with the bikes.
See, maybe my mic is just up really high. Anyway. So, welcome. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. I was looking for a flag. It's so rare that we actually have a flag in here. So my apologies. Just like waiting for that. I videoed it. So again, welcome, everyone. We're going to start this evening with recognitions.
Yeah, we have two recognitions to start this evening. And just a reminder for everybody, we're live in person at Carver Middle High School in the auditorium, and this school community is also available live on channel fourteen of cable broadcasts. So we're going to start first with our mock trial recognition. And I want to start a little bit, I'm just going to introduce the members of the mock trial team. We're over here to my left. Then I'll tell a little bit about the process, and then maybe one or two might come up and talk about how the season went this year for them. So first, the members of our mock trial team. Jay Barney. You can stand there. Shayna Struski. Amber Smith. Abigail Farmer. Lucas McGrail. Sophia Tibbetts. Megan, you don't have to stand. Megan Daly. Lilian Wiyafe. Corinne Clarity. Riley Reed Davis. And Morgan Reed Davis. So the Massachusetts Bar Association's Mock Trial Program offers high school students from across the state an opportunity to test their skills as lawyers and witnesses in a simulated courtroom competition. Throughout the competition, students learn about the fundamentals of the American judicial system and how it can impact their lives. Each competing school participates in a minimum of three contests against competing schools in their region. Students who participate must be able to demonstrate comprehension of statutory and case law, the protections afforded to all of us in a trial situation, a complete command of the facts of the case, and the quick thinking to connect the dots and make their cases as lawyers and witnesses in courts throughout the state. The Mock Trial Program benefits our high school participants in many ways. The overall purpose of the tournament is to provide following educational benefits: furthering students' understanding of the law, court proceedings, civil liberties, and our legal system; increasing students' proficiency in basic life skills such as listening, speaking, reading, and reasoning; and developing students' advocacy skills regarding, regardless of which side of the case they're representing. And through the process, they have to represent both sides. So during those first three competitions, one time they have to take one side, one time they take the other, and then the third time they take the third side. Oh, no, there isn't a third side. They take, they take one of the other sides again. I thought that, that joke didn't lay very well. That's okay. Highlighting, and then lastly, highlight students' consciousness of law-related professions and the academic studies that lead students to go on to be lawyers. This year's team advanced to the Sweet Sixteen, winning their region. So that's, that's why they're here to be recognized, because they were the champions for their region, and they competed in the Sweet Sixteen competition. And we want to recognize them for a great season. So I don't know if anybody wants to come up and talk a little about it, or yes or no. Shayna, I heard Shayna was elected. If you don't mind going to it. So, I think Shayna, you've been a member for four years, yes? As a four-year member of the mock trial team. And also a captain.
Yes. So Mock Trial has been a very challenging and rewarding experience. It's definitely the thing I've had to put the most work and effort into out of all my activities, but it's always been worth it, and it's definitely worth it to watch new kids come in and grow as people and as lawyers. Like, it's a crazy, crazy difficult thing to be able to stand up in front of people and memorize things and think on your feet. And I'm really proud of everyone on the team this year, and especially reaching the Sweet Sixteen. That's like top sixteen out of a hundred-something schools, and we've done that two years in a row. So I think that's really cool, and I'm super proud of everybody on the team.
Shayna, very nice talking. The, the school committee is speaking for them. Would love to do a picture with the mock trial team. So if the members of the mock trial team would come forward, and maybe we can do a picture with the committee, and that'd be great. Maybe out in front of the...
Absolutely.
Hey, what? You go fight, we'll make you, make you rows.
Okay. So, super, super quickly, I just want to say thank you all for coming, taking the time to come join us this evening. I know how much work you all put into this. It's pretty impressive. And congratulations on your accomplishments. So thank you for celebrating with us tonight.
Yeah. Shayna definitely took the words out of my mouth, because I was going to say you guys did really well last year, too. And there was no mock trial when I attended Carver, and I love that this happens. I feel like there's such good life skills that can get taught throughout that process as well, and it's just preparing you for your future. So great job, all of you. And thank you to Jackie for leading it.
Yes. Thank you. Oh, sure, turn right up. Absolutely.
So, the mock trial teams in Massachusetts that traditionally compete are anywhere between a hundred and thirty-eight and a hundred and forty-five schools, and that's been, for the sixteen or seventeen years that I've been coaching, we've had those kinds of numbers. In the first year of the pandemic, the NBA did not even attempt to hold a mock trial competition, but a number of the lawyers, two in particular, who consistently volunteer for the Mass Bar Association in the program, decided that they would hire someone at their law firm and put on a competition. And that competition, I think it cost us four times as much to enter. But we entered it, and it was virtual. And then, and it was very successful, but no more than sixty teams were able to muster both the people and the wherewithal in their schools to be able to compete. And the following year, the Mass Bar Association said, well, you put it all together for us, now we can do it. And they ran it again, and, and it was still less than a hundred. This year's team, this year's competition included a hundred and six teams. So the program is not yet back to where it once was in terms of the numbers that compete. However, Carver has come together, like, the pandemic did not stop us. And we showed up, and we have competed at a pretty high level throughout. So I'm really proud of these, these girls and, and this young gentleman who just joined this year because they kept up the program for Carver while everyone else was really struggling.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for sharing.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
And then I will put some pressure on myself, and this is a brawl. So we, we've been talking at our administrative team that, you know, the, obviously making the Sweet Sixteen, I don't know what it's equivalent to in terms of a sport. Maybe it's winning the league, maybe it's a little more than winning the league. But we should probably need to start doing some recognitions around the building of our competition teams, like we do for the culinary team, has the banners out front, and different teams, and looking how we can recognize the mock trial team for their accomplishments, so that they would be, you know, so it would be ingrained somewhere in the building, so people would know ten years from now about the accomplishments of the current team. And it also helps build the tradition of, you know, seeing that and saying, this is something that we do and do really well.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great idea.
We don't, we don't know what it's going to look like exactly yet, but, but maybe that's what I should have mentioned, yeah. But it's definitely a discussion we've begun to undertake.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Well deserved. Thank you so much.
So we do have a second recognition this evening. We are excited to recognize Isabel Mercer. Izzy's here, so she can come up. That'd be great. We're excited, we're excited to recognize Isabel for being selected to participate in the All-State Music Festival as a member of the chorus. Being selected is quite an honor. The sixty-ninth Annual Massachusetts All-State Concert features more than five hundred of the state's most dedicated and up-and-coming musicians in chorus, orchestra, concert band, and jazz. Sponsored by the Massachusetts Music Education Association, the annual All-State Concert offers talented high school students the opportunity to rehearse and perform under the direction of nationally-recognized conductors. Some one thousand students audition each year with only about five hundred that are accepted. And after an intensive rehearsal process, they usually have the opportunity to perform as a group. Izzy actually just let me know, I, first I'd heard that the performance was postponed, and now unfortunately, the performance has been canceled, because lacking, they, they're lacking a venue to go and do the performance, which is really disappointing. But we're not here, we're not here to talk about disappointment. We're here to talk about the celebration of, you know, recognizing Izzy as an All-State, reaching that status of being All-State in chorus for music. So I don't know if you want to talk a little about your experience towards the auditions, trying out, and, and you did, you had a couple practices?
Um, section, there was a scale, and there was a song that was very stressful and hard to sing. And then, just being there all the way, I believe it wasn't stoked in the auditions. It was very, it was very stressful seeing everyone there, as being a soprano is very, is very competitive, because there's so many of them. So truthfully, I didn't even think I was going to get in after my audition, but I was very surprised and happy to see that I did, because I know that these competitions are such a fun experience. And on the day of the rehearsal before the concert, we rehearsed all of our songs, because we had, had an amazing conductor, and I met a bunch of people from across the entire state, and I made a bunch of friends that I still communicate with now. And I really do wish I got to have the concert, because it would have been amazing performing in the Boston's P-Hall. But unfortunately, it did get postponed the day before because of the weather, because it was going to snow really hard in Boston. So they postponed it, and I just found just the other day that it got canceled, because they couldn't find a venue after trying multiple places. But I'm very thankful that I got the practice day that I did. And then just after that, I did have sunspots, so that sort of made up for it. But I do think that we should encourage more students to practice and do these things, because they're such a great experience.
Yeah, obviously, truly, it's, it's your dedication to your craft that leads you to be accepted and earn this type of honor. So congratulations, too. I don't know if any members of the committee have anything additional?
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations. So sorry that it was, that it was canceled, but feel free to come perform for us. No pressure, no pressure, but...
We still have the spring concert here, right?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, who knows? Maybe we can incorporate it somehow, but congratulations, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to do a picture? Because we do do a picture with all of our, all of our recognition, so...
We do. They come do a picture with us? Come do a picture with us? Have a picture.
I have a breakout.
It's embarrassing. I do seem to embarrass my child. No, you won't, because they won't.
And it's not a specific recognition, but I'd also just like to mention, we have several members of our cast of Cinderella who are here this evening, be recognized for other things. Megan Daly, who's leaving the auditorium.
Great job!
And Izzy Mercer, Lilian Wiyafe. All were participants in Cinderella, so thank you for that. Nice job.
It was really great. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the EAPC, and I see Tom Pinto.
Live in.
Hey! Yeah, I know, it's our autumn, we get to see him in person. Welcome. Welcome, Tom. It's lovely to have you.
Evening, everyone. Again, following some great stuff, students, staff doing Carver. It's always great to see all the amazing thing everybody's doing. I'm just, you know, I'll be brief as, as you probably usual. You know, April's here, I'm, I'm very excited about that. The weather today was, was nice. I always feel as an educator, March, March is that like tough month, it's long, it's gray. You know, the weather, you don't know what you're going to get. So I feel like with, with March being over and April, we're getting ready for that final push, which usually comes right after April vacation. I think the vacation, many of us are looking forward to, you know, just to kind of keep the press a little bit. That being said, I know on Monday, we are doing that air quality test. We met with Scott, we had a good subcommittee group. Ron asked some questions, I saw the email that, that was responded to, so that we should be ready to rock on Monday on that. And, and just to put it out there, I know the question was answered. It is free to the Carver taxpayers and everything like that, the association, and through the MTA is covering all the costs on that, so that it will be at no cost to anyone. So we look forward to getting that worked on. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you so much. Take care. Okay. Absolutely. Oh, that's great. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the general public. So if there's anyone here in the auditorium with us that would like to speak, you're more than welcome to. You can just come right up to the table and share your thoughts or comments with us. I don't have to ask, because we're not on Zoom. So seeing no movement to the mic, we will move on to comments from the student ambassadors.
So we'll, we'll please welcome Chloe Anderson and Reece Short this evening, who will be representing the student ambassadors from Carver Elementary.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Pull that mic nice and close, girls, okay?
Hi, I'm Reece Short. And I'm Chloe Anderson. We are student ambassadors from Carver Elementary School, and we want to share some of the great activities happening at our school. Grades one and two just took a field trip to the Zeitarian Theater to watch the play of the Magic School Bus. Have you ever gone to the Zeitarian Theater? Yes, I remember we went on a field trip to see the Magic School Bus when we were little. The Magic School Bus teaches kids life lessons and about science. Families of grades, families of students in grades K, pre-K through two were invited to see Big Ryan, read expressively, and use puppets. Students were able to explore books and create their own puppet based on a book character. What's your favorite book character? Winnie from Chuck Overlasting is my favorite. I love Matilda from the book Matilda. Fifth grade has grown lettuce with a hydroponic garden. The lettuce is growing like crazy. We can have salads for weeks. Students are able to take home a little bag of lettuce for their families. Fourth and fifth, fifth graders saw a science play performed in a fun way. Students were called up to help perform different skits as part of the show. Students were able to participate throughout the whole performance. The second annual Carver Family Fun Night was put together by the SEL Committee, which is made up of parents, community members, teachers, and administrators. There were tons of fun things to do, including bingo and musical performances. The high school band, Pat Crump, the elementary chorus, and the cast of the Aristocats performed. Carver Middle High School culinary students baked treats for the event. The Carver Coyote also made an appearance. Over one hundred students in grades four and five sang and danced as part of the, as part of the musical, The Aristocats. Ms. Cramp, Mrs. Swanton, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Duso, and Ms. Sherwood all worked together to create a wonderful show. Thanks to all who shared their time and talents to make this show happen. Carver Elementary School had Literacy Month, and one of the fun activities involved was Vocabulary Day. Vocabulary Day is when you choose a word and dress up as that word. I saw one kid dress up as supercalifragilisticexpialidocious. My teacher dressed like the word mythical, and she had pants that looked like mermaid scales. My other teacher dressed like perpendicular and had a plaid shirt on. People got really creative. Guest reader day is when a mystery person comes into each classroom to read a book. I had Mrs. Vienna as our guest reader. She even brought her baby in. She read the book, I Am Love. My mom was the guest reader for our class and also read the book, I Am Love. One of these photos shows Chief Weston from the fire, Carver Fire Department, reading to Ms. Mrs. Brown's third-grade class. The Assistant District Attorney came to speak to fifth graders about responsibility in using social media platforms. Other topics include cyberbullying and that online friends are still strangers. There was an example of a guy named Kevin who asked his boss if he could have some time off, because he had an emergency in New York he had to go to. However, he went to a Halloween party, and a picture of him was shared in a costume on social media. His boss saw it. He was busted and fired because he lied. What you put on the internet stays there forever, so you have to be careful with the digital footprint you leave. Have a great evening, and remember, above all, be kind.
Oh, great job, you guys!
Thank you very much.
That was fantastic.
Yeah, thank you for coming and sharing all the wonderful things happening at Carver Elementary School. Okay, so that brings us to approval of minutes from the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three open session.
I will make a motion to approve the open session minutes from March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, animus? Thank you very much. That brings us to communications.
So I just wanted to share with the community that our, our fire department internship program was actually recognized in, in a national publication for firefighters called Smoke Showing. And that is, that is our Carver Fire Department interns from, I believe, two years ago. And, but they did a whole, it was being held up as a model of what a fire department internship program should look like actually nationally. So that's pretty exciting. The text of the article is actually in your background, you know, so you have the opportunity to read the article. But I just wanted to say, you know, the fire department came over to share with us, this is really impressive, and, and we're excited about that, you know, we're, we're being recognized, and, and really that our program is being held up as a model for those throughout the state and really throughout the country.
That's amazing.
That's awesome.
All right, okay, so that takes us to reports from the superintendent.
So personnel updates, we have had some staff movement since last time we met. We have a few new hires. Tamia Pinto as an RBT ESP at the middle high school. Connor McKinnon is an ESP in special education at the middle high school. Kyle Shabano is an ESP special education at the middle high school. We have had a few resignations. Michael Doyle as a special education slash business teacher at the middle high school. Sean Carey as a physical education teacher at the middle high school. Jill Steinberg is an RBT at the elementary school. Stephanie J. Atkinson as an ESP at the elementary school. Deanna Alda as an RBT at the middle high school. Mike Schultz is the principal of Carver Middle High School. Zach LeBlanc is a physical education teacher, assistant AD at the middle high school, and Amy Tenberge is an ESP at the middle high school. We also had three people who have announced their retirement since we last met. Eileen McPherson, RBT at the middle high school, is retiring at the end of the school year. Teresa Fernandez-Payne is a math teacher at the middle high school, is retiring at the end of the year. And Lisa Cassani, as a special education teacher at the elementary school, is retiring at the end of the year.
Thank you.
So moving on, ready to go on to project-based learning? All right, so, all right, so we're excited to have Mrs. Calvo and Sydney Sheehan and Katie Blotner here with us. We're going to talk a little bit about their project-based learning project. This is a little bit of background. Mrs. Calvo is one of the members of the middle high school staff, who've been trained in what's called PBL, or project-based learning. In total, over thirty teachers have done the training over the past two years. Each teacher has to implement at least two what's called PBL projects each year. And Maria's here with Katie and Sydney to talk about one of the PBL projects she was doing in her Spanish classes. So they're going to give you an overview of the project and show you what they created.
Excellent, welcome.
Hi, thank you. So I don't know if everyone is familiar with what PBL stands for, project-based learning. It is just another way of teaching. It's a methodology, and yes, it is about projects, but there is a difference between the usual projects that any teacher can have in a class and what PBL works is teaching us. The, the key part here is that the student... It is not only a project where there will be repetition because someone memorized, or that they are going to show their understanding. We have to go beyond that, so yes, they memorize things, and yes, they will be understanding, but they have to create something. And when we have the creation of something, then the thinking is higher, there is more brain in the activities. Another characteristic is that there has to be collaboration, so it is not like a one thing, one student only. It is, it involves different, different students. It has different forms of communication as well, so Mr. Neef, in the next slide, collaboration. So everyone has to work together, and that is my, that was my main skill that we wanted to develop or to practice in this project. So that's what we worked on and developed with our program. So if we go to the next one, PBL works talks about different elements that they have to have, and we always start with a challenging problem or question. And we have to end with a public product, which brings us why we are here, to make it public to you. And now Katie and Sydney are gonna tell you about that process, that, the previous one, Mr. Neef, we can stay there. The order of the different elements doesn't have to be like one after the other. They can happen, happen at any time. So yes, at the beginning, we start with a problem, and yes, we will end with a public product, but all the other five elements can happen anytime during the project. Our project took three terms.
So long.
Three terms. We started day one, and we finished in a week ago. So, here, Katie and Sydney.
So, hi, everyone, my name is Anishian.
I'm Katie Blotner.
So our initial question that we really asked was how can we get students to stay at Carver, and how can we get new students into Carver for high school? I know that we lose a lot of students, a very large percentage, once we started really looking into the research, go off to charter schools or private schools, or even become homeschooled, and we just don't really know why that was. So we went into all the research, and we found a whole bunch of information that basically said some students didn't believe that Carver had what they were looking for. So that's the question that we started off with.
And so when we looked further into it, we, we noticed that they felt they didn't have as much of an opportunity to like excel and maybe something that they felt passionate about at Carver. So we wanted to put something together to show that Carver had multiple, many opportunities for many different people, and we also wanted to recognize that. It, there is, like, obviously, some students are gonna go off to Voc Tech school because we're not a Voc Tech school, but we do have the Pathways Program and want to make that more well-known to eighth grade students and middle school students so that they would take Carver into consideration as their high school option.
So beginning this project, we started in our Spanish four or five honors class, and we just started brainstorming. We had a big map, it kind of looked like a criminal board, where we had all of our little sticky notes everywhere, and we had the connecting dots of how can we really make this video actually a thing and not just everyone's ideas that really wanted to just be out there. So our students came up with everything from people they wanted to interview to questions they wanted to ask, to how can we actually make it a thing and not just an idea. So we connected all the little dots, and we started to do things and get people in the studio, and we actually had our students go off and write their own questions, and then they went off with their people and did their many interviews where they recorded, and then we came back as a class and we all kind of connected the dots a little bit more. We reverbed a little bit of what people said so that it wasn't a 45-minute video of what everyone had said. We cut that down to just under eight minutes of footage after getting people back into the studio. I know that Katie and myself had a large part in getting people actually in the studio, but it really was all of our students working together in the classroom to like get the people, get what they wanted to say out there, and all the things like that. So really, it was a major collaboration work of everyone wanted everything, and we were able to make that happen.
I know, personally, me and students, two of my students went and interviewed Mr. Neef. We just like asked him basically what he liked about the school, what he thought was good about Carver, and what it offered, and then what he was looking forward to in like the future of the school, and other students went out to like different, like department heads or pathway program leaders and stuff, like other teachers, to just like get different voices of Carver. We've interviewed students and stuff like that to get just a bunch of different perspectives. And then throughout the entire video process, we would show people like what we got, we would say, I interviewed Mr. Neef, I would get his answers, and I would say, okay, Sid, Sydney, how do you think I should like revise this, and then go back to him and have him relook at what we think, so make sure that we really captured what he wanted to say. And then Sydney started editing the video a lot on the WeVideo program that we use, and so she would show it to different people in the class, and she would go, hey, what do you think here? What do you think about this part of the video? Should we keep this? Should we take this out? So it was real collaboration that we had to look at together, like a wide perspective, but all in miniature groups to like bring it all together.
Something that I liked in the process was that authenticity, because the project and the video that we were trying to make was about themselves. My students, as many students in the school are proud to be here, they are proud of their school, and they wanted to show that to students that might be thinking about living, or students that might be looking for a school, and by looking at our video, they could be like, hmm, that's the school I want to go. So we wanted them, it spoke to them, so that that was authentic to them. Revision, as Katie was saying, went back and forth, back and forth, we were reflecting, we were critiquing. We had experts come into our class. So for example, we, we had Ms. Russell, who came to our class and as an expert in the design and in the, you know, like she has this view that she can go back and say, yes, this is working, she gave us that feedback. We had the feedback from Mr. Ewalt, that is in charge of the, of the studio, and he was giving us his feedback on what to put or what to add, what to remove. So all this sustained inquiry, the, the critique, the revision, the reflection happened throughout the three terms that it took us to do this. So moving on to the next slide. Finally, you might ask, how is this related to my Spanish class?
I was gonna ask if they had to do it in Spanish.
Well, if we, if we, that was like my, when I first was designing this in this training last summer, I was like, okay, how, how can I make this public? Because there aren't too many Spanish speakers in the, in the community. There might be a few who also understand the English, so how could we do this? So we said, let's do it in English, but we're gonna be translating everything. So our video has the subtitles in Spanish that all of our students translated, so everyone translated a little piece, just not done with Google Translator and automatically, but we, we said, well, and throughout the process, my students also learned how to say different, the programs that we were, we were discussing, or the different people that were being interviewed, they learned all that vocabulary, and they were tested, and so we had content as well, while we were developing this. I didn't stop on the curriculum for three, or three terms, but we started like for one month, and then we move on, and then we were still working on this on the side. So, I think, do you want to watch more? No? So we just want you to watch it and enjoy it. It's less than seven minutes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Cabral, and I am proud to serve as the interim principal of Carver Middle High School. As new students, we welcome you to begin your journey as academic scholars, pathway prodigies, and start your first days as a high school student at Carver Middle High School, knowing you will be supported in our community.
Hello, my name is Scott Neef, and I am the superintendent of the Carver Public Schools. Carver is a wonderful, supportive community, in which I love working with the staff and students.
Carver is a really special place to work. I have, I've worked here for almost my entire career, and, and I plan to keep working here until I retire. One of the things that just makes it a special place is the kind of tight-knit community, departments that have really gelled over the years, celebrating, sometimes commiserating, just enjoying each other's company, getting to know each other over the years, just building a special community within a larger special community.
The climate of the school is accelerating in a positive direction. We're investing a lot into upgrading various spaces in the school, as well as curriculum to make things more modern for everyone. As for relationships between students, everyone has been very supportive of each other.
At Carver, we offer classes through the Virtual High School Learning Program. This allows students to take classes they are interested in, which school may not offer. Students also have the opportunity to take part in the dual enrollment classes from local colleges to earn college credit in high school.
Advanced placement courses have a standardized curriculum with a globally distributed assessment, which helps students to gain important values and skills to be challenged at a higher level. AP classes provide great preparation, not just for college, but also to be a good critical thinker, reader, writer, and overall good citizen.
In order to prepare juniors and seniors for college, we offer junior workshops, senior boot camp, a college fair, college tours, field trips, individual meetings with students, and we also help with filling out college applications step by step.
The library at Carver Middle High School is used in a multitude of ways. It's an extension of the classroom, a quiet reading space. We have students that come in and eat lunch in the library, so, you know, I would say it's used many different ways. Every day is different. We have small groups that use the library from personal finance, cybersecurity classes, mythology class. Sixth grade classes use the library space a lot with their teachers when they're working on projects. It's a nice space for the students.
Hola, I am Mrs. Calvo, and I am the advisor of the Spanish and French National Learner Society.
We are the officers of the society. Our clubs give students the opportunity to be aware that it's important to know other languages and cultures.
As a society, we participate in community service, and we tutor in the Homework Club, which provides free student teaching.
We support the Spanish and French weekends in our building by celebrating the culture.
We have a direct influence on each other and show leadership, commitment, and determination.
Student Council encourages all students to make a difference within our community and participate in student-led activities. Through collecting donations for charities such as Special Olympics and Make-A-Wish, and organizing school-spirited events, our students are given the opportunity to serve our greater school community.
Coaching the girls volleyball team is another amazing part of my job in addition to teaching English. I get to see my students succeed in a space outside of the classroom.
Every single level I wrestle on, I can tell you that the biggest and most important factor is team, being able to work with your team on and off the mat, supporting your team from the sidelines and in the practice room. Carver has that environment.
Carver is quite unique with its counseling services. Last year, we made the decision to bring in the support dog, and he's here to stay. Once a week, O'Malley comes in to say hi to the students of his favorite middle high school, which helps us to form a better relationship with students.
Carver is a small school, which allows for the guidance department to get to know each student in order to provide appropriate support to meet their individual needs.
One of our main goals for the district is to keep our students safe in school. We want students and families to feel comfortable enough to talk to their counselors and let us know how we can help support them.
We are always striving to improve the culture here at Carver Middle High School, and we work toward this in a variety of ways, including teacher training on how to deal with bullying situations and building our World of Difference program.
As students discover their passions through the Pathways Program, seniors are granted the privilege to take in an internship. Our supervisors work with students to leave the Carver campus for an extended time, creating unique and beneficial experiences for our students.
The creation of the Pathways Program came when studies have shown that hands-on, application-based learning can be more effective.
The Computer Science Pathway builds from basics from eighth grade all the way to AP Computer Science senior year. It's critical for people to be consumers of this knowledge as technology is growing exponentially in this ever-evolving world. In the CS Pathway, students learn how to code, but more importantly, understand how technology works and thinks.
The Maker Space gave other students, along with myself, the opportunity to learn real-world skills. As a part of the MET Pathway, it helped me find a place that makes learning fun and engaging.
In the Culinary Pathway, we do a lot of work with food pantries and give food to senior citizens. Due to Carver's small community, we have good bonds with local businesses, which give students the opportunity to get jobs very quickly after graduation.
The Performing Arts Pathway offers the ability to think creatively and problem-solve through a variety of two- and three-dimensional materials. These classes offered at Carver Middle High School use industry-standard equipment and materials that are found in both university and professional settings, which gears our students up for success if they choose to pursue a career or further education in this field.
The Environmental and Agricultural Science Pathway is an exciting and growing field. Our goal is to show students the diversity and opportunities available to them. With our new greenhouse and field station, our students will be able to conduct real research as well as learning the hands-on skills they will need to be successful in the future.
Biotechnology is one of the fastest-growing career fields in the state of Massachusetts. Our goal is to offer students access to the most cutting-edge scientific technologies, and to help them develop skills that will make them career-ready upon their graduation from Carver Middle High School.
Carver is a great school because...
Carver is inclusive.
Inviting.
Enriching.
Helpful.
Ah, inspiring.
Safe.
Friendly.
Enlightening.
Exhilarating.
Kind.
Fun. Engaging.
Welcoming.
This is us.
This is Crusader Nation!
So, why don't you stay for half a second? So, obviously, the video is outstanding, we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna be putting it on the website, and the students were really thoughtful about this whole process. It really took the time to make this type of product, a product that we can use to, and hit on the key points, what we want to see happening at the middle high school in terms of culture and connectedness and engagement, and just opportunities, and highlighting the opportunities that exist in the school. So I thank you for doing that, I thank you for taking that project on, that you want to help celebrate and promote our school system, so I personally really appreciate that, so I wanted to thank you. And then on a bigger scope, this is just, this is an example of the types of projects we're looking to integrate at the high school level, at the middle high school level through PBL. So this PBL training is really, the, the goal is the PBL training is going to shift our approach towards education. And obviously, not everything can be this type of project, because the, I, we didn't ask you how many hours you spent on it, but there's a lot of hours that went into this. But if, if students are having these types of experiences in all their classes, and one or two of these types of experiences in all these classes, it really does redefine our approach to education. That's the goal of what we're doing through PBL, and it's the goal of what we're doing through Pathways at the middle high school, is to try to redefine what's happening. So you're a part of that, and I appreciate it, Mr. Calvo, thank you for being here, and I don't know if any of the members of the committee have anything additional, or questions, or...
I'm just curious if it's published anywhere, or how we would be able to share it.
So I think the goal for, there's this kind of like completing the project and making it public, so we're gonna try and get it onto the, like, Carver website, and then hopefully share it at like further school-wide assemblies.
Excellent, great job.
Do you know, actually, the answer is, is it up on the website as of yet? No?
It is not, we are waiting for it to go live this evening first, but then it will be on the website.
Wonderful. I think you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. That was great. See, now more people will have an easy way to discover and see, right, all the amazing things that happen in our district every day.
Great things happen every day.
Right? I mean, it's amazing to have that led with student voice, so thank you, Mrs. Calvo.
And I love...
And I loved the transcription on the bottom, too. Como se dice was my favorite phrase when I took Spanish.
That was really great.
Ms. Spillane, who sobs, was one of my Spanish teachers and she would probably attest that I probably used that phrase a little too much. Which, for those who don't know, como se dice is how do you say? So, then you could say, como se dice, and then ramble in English.
Thank you. That was truly inspiring.
That was awesome.
Okay, so that brings us to...
Intervention, the elementary school.
Yes.
Meredith A. Henry.
Good evening. That was so enjoyable. And I was reading all the subtitles. They did a great job with that. I learned so much about the Pathways program and brushing up on my Spanish.
Welcome.
Thank you. It is fun to see those experiences come to life. So, we're going to actually drop down to the elementary school right now and talk about elementary intervention and what our plan is for next year. And we annually evaluate the efficacy of how we approach intervention and how we support all learners in an effort to make sure that they are reading and writing and doing math at grade levels. So, the essential question that we use to drive that ongoing cycle of review is how do we design an ongoing system of support in which students can progress towards grade-level skills, application, and knowledge? So, that's kind of the overarching driver every year. And so, I want to talk a little bit about intervention. But before we dive into the research base, we shared with you two years ago that we are very invested in capitalizing on S R funds to be able to create a COVID response intervention model. And through that model, in a short term, so in a two-year span, the intention was to hire some ESP support and be able to increase the number of students that we serve. So, using kind of the right side of this slide as a driver, we continue to adhere to what Massachusetts uses as an intervention framework, a conceptual framework called the Multi-Tierred System of Support, or MTSS, as most teachers in the field know it. And the intention of MTSS is to always ensure that students receive core instruction that is strong enough that 80% or more of our students are able to do or achieve grade-level proficiency. So, do grade-level work, achieve grade-level proficiency. And then, again, nationally speaking in regards to response to intervention, or MTSS, another 6% to 15% of students, anywhere in that range, would get something called Tier Two Intervention. So, that's a little boost to fill in some gaps or to try to narrow gaps that may have occurred. And then, at the apex of that triangle, another 1% to 5% of students need something called Tier Three Intervention, and that is very intensive support around a particular disability or difference, or something that requires more and different in order to achieve grade-level support. So, that structure, that MTSS structure, has been around for some time and has continually been refined by researchers, scholars, practitioners in the field. And so, we use that as a driver. I will say that during our COVID response model, we were able to provide a lot more support to students because if you remember, two years ago, that students really only had the opportunity to access about 54% of the curriculum, and that was if they came to school every day, if their teacher came to school every day, and if they were able to benefit from the fact that we had that hybrid model. So, we've talked about kind of the ongoing need to remediate and the importance of being responsive to that interrupted learning or unfinished learning that we discussed. So, we're at the point now, two years out, where, again, being reflexive to the data and understanding where our students' gaps are, that we can reconstitute what we had prior to COVID. So, we knew the COVID response model would last two years. So, our staffing for next year, which Ruby will talk about in just a moment, is very similar, or is exactly similar, to what we had prior to COVID. And Scott, do you mind going back to that? No, that's right, that one slide. We have fewer slides, but more talking. I'll ring the little tinker bell noise. So, in our reconstituted model, we are still continually engaging in what is working and how can we support students as we start to wean ourselves off of, or graduate ourselves out of, our COVID model. So, one of the indicators of that is we took our middle-of-the-year N W E A results and looked at those by grade level. And we really looked at how is our core working? So, the education that all students get in that Tier One band, it says 80% or more of our students should be at grade level. And in doing that and having our instructional coaches, Jen Kelly and Kate Moore, look at that data, we realize that the need for intervention for individual students is so slight in kindergarten, first, and second grade next year that we're able to accommodate gaps that our third and fourth graders may have as a result of COVID. And if you remember, some of the research that we've pointed out before and that we feel is kind of a living entity in our own data review, is that COVID hit kindergarten, first, and second grade the hardest in terms of learning how to read, and then hit third, fourth, and fifth grade the hardest in terms of math. And as we move from more concrete to abstract math concepts, we see that as well. But the good news is that Bridges has been such a strong Tier One or strong core program that the majority of our students, maybe two or three students in a grade level, are not achieving where Bridges says that they need to achieve. So, that's really exemplary and something that we tried to really focus on as we were looking for a new math program. In terms of reading, you all know that we started our new reading approach this year. And so, we know that it takes a couple of years to go through and to see those differences, but we mentioned that we're seeing a lot of those differences already anecdotally in the classroom. And Ruby will share some of those highlights in just a moment, but it's been remarkable. So, we're hopeful that we will continue to focus on that. Thank you. So, I'm going to turn the time over to Ruby so she can talk a little bit about operationally how intervention works at the elementary school.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Carver Elementary School has had an intervention model over the last several years, actually, since I've been at Carver Elementary since 2009. And every year, it's different. And it needs to look different because that's really the continuous cycle of improvement. You're always looking at the students you have in front of you. And so, what does that really look like at Carver Elementary? So, we're using, we use universal, we use a series of data. We call that triangulating data. So, we're looking at, we use the N W A. We've used that for the last couple of years. We use curriculum-based measurements. We use, we gather teacher input. And we really look closely at how students are progressing from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year and the end of the year. And that's how we start to design our intervention model. So, it's constantly fluid and it needs to be if we're going to be accurately supporting students and helping our model to be effective. So, what are we doing in intervention? We're really focusing intently on skill deficits for students. So, you know, when you look at that Tier One and Tier Two intervention section there, it says targeted skill instruction. That's what it is. Targeted skill instruction is we're focusing on students' deficits. So, this is high-quality, multi-model intervention, and it occurs in small groups. And it's really designed to be short-term. Intervention shouldn't be long-term. So, but it could be, let's just say, six to eight weeks of support for students. And then, they've demonstrated progress because we're constantly progress-monitoring. We're using dipsticks to, and short, brief passages, for example, just to monitor students and see how they're doing. So, students, some students may move out of intervention in the middle of the year and others may move in. So, that's that whole continuous cycle. We also use our Instructional Study Team. So, some of you may have heard of IST. It stands for Instructional Study Team. It's an internal team of educators who meet regularly to support teachers, to listen to concerns, to identify strategies that may help. And sometimes, it might be intervention that is identified as a need for a particular student. So, again, we're looking at all of our data. It's this continuous cycle of monitoring data. Our instructional coaches are working with administrators, with teachers, with all of the intervention staff, which is the reading interventionists, and this year, some of our math ESPs. So, we're all constantly looking at that data, working closely with students to provide that targeted instruction, and then monitoring. Like I had said earlier, short assessments reveal where students have gained skills and whether they can apply them in their learning tasks. If they're demonstrating that they can apply these in day-to-day skills in that day-to-day tasks, then that's another dipstick, so to speak, that's saying, okay, they're ready to move out of intervention. All right, so, let's go on to the next slide so I can tell you a little bit about how our intervention's schedule and school-wide schedule is built. So, as Meredith mentioned earlier, we're seeing some really nice progress with our kindergarten students, our first-grade students, and our second-grade students. Going into third grade, we know we have to focus a bit more intently on and providing some targeted skill instruction for our entering third graders especially. And if you think about it, the entering third graders are the students that were in kindergarten back in 2020, 2021. All right, so how do we build a schedule at the Carver Elementary School? So, each year, right at about February and March, we start to gather input from our teachers and all of the staff. This schedule is a very inclusive schedule that, you know, it includes lots of folks. I meet with Teresa, we meet with Ron, we talk, we look at the part-time staff, we look at the full-time staff, we look at our contract and what our contractual obligations are. And we're trying to build a schedule that's going to really support 800 students and the staff that we have. And intervention really has to be one of the first things that we look at to build this schedule because some of our intervention staff are, we have reading staff and we have some math staff. So, if you see right below, we have a 2.5 reading specialist, so two full-time and a part-time reading specialist, along with our literacy coach, and then our math coach. And going into next year, we will have two part-time math ESPs. All of these folks here will help to support the intervention model of our school day. So, we ask teachers for input as well on intervention, on their sort of desired schedule. We work with allied arts teachers, we work with everyone to try to build a schedule that is ideal for everyone. Obviously, sometimes, everyone's, not everyone's ideal schedule can actually really happen. But there's a lot of inner workings to help to bring it to life. So, this, you know, our schedule is always aligned with instructional blocks that are outlined by our math and literacy programs. So, what I mean by that is our math students need to receive a certain amount of math instruction. So, for example, 90 minutes of math instruction in a school day. It could also be 120 minutes of literacy instruction. So, we're looking at balancing all of that. We're very close to having our schedule finalized. We're working on a few tweaks. But I'm proud to say that the whole school staff has really worked together to help the schedule next year reflect the needs of all of the students. And then, family engagement goes into everything we do for, you know, supporting students. And there are central partners, as it says up here, in helping their students strengthen their literacy and math skills. It's so important that, you know, these programs that we've had, we saw earlier when the student ambassadors were here, we saw a little, a couple of photos with... What's his name, Big Ryan? Sorry about that. Big Ryan partnered with our literacy coach and Dr. Stahl to bring approximately 65 students to the elementary school to sit on the floor, read books, make puppets. We had our Title One night, movie night, earlier in the year. So, lots of these events to get kids excited, to get families excited about reading, and to really help promote literacy. We've had some work with the PTO where we had families come to school, bring gently-used books for Tricks No Treats. So, all of these things are working really hand-in-hand to help put books in children's hands, to get kids excited about reading, to make it high-interest reading. And one of the things that I'm hearing from teachers, matter of fact, just yesterday, a first-grade teacher, several first-grade teachers, said to me, my kids are all reading, they're reading chapter books. This has not happened in a long time, or this has not happened ever. So, I just, I'm just so excited about not only intervention, but all of the work that's been happening at the elementary school to get kids where they are in the Pathways program. So, when I'm watching the Pathways PowerPoint, which was incredibly impressive, all of these kids, we're working to get them to read and to be excited about learning. And then, look at what they're doing when they're in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade.
Sorry, any questions?
So, I know that this year, the elementary school was doing sort of a win block. You know, I think, you know, pulling off of what the middle high school is doing. But I know some of the classroom teachers were using that period to like, as an opportunity to maybe do some refinements or practice extra materials. You know, maybe do some of these intervention-type things within the classroom where, you know, they saw needs. And so, I'm just curious if, what the intention will be, if there'll be a win time next year, if you're going to use that sort of as part of intervention.
I'll answer. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. But I wanted to jump right in. So, win block at the elementary is very different than what it is at the middle high school. So, what I need, and it is definitely designed to be more intervention-like. So, what I need in terms of academics is really more of what it's all about. So, yes, we are going to have a win block in grades three, four, and five. It's a 30-minute block. And we will, it will be primarily serviced by our math ESPs.
And just to add to that, as Ruby mentioned, it is a completely different and separate experience than what win is at the middle high school. It is very academically focused. And also, it is a result of a conversation that occurred last year after we collected feedback from the whole staff. And one concern that they had is, again, in our initial COVID response model, we had dedicated a specific intervention block for students to get math and reading support during that time. But that was challenging depending on if a student needed no extra support, needed just reading or math, or needed both. Because there were situations where the classroom teacher was feeling like they personally may not have enough time to offer additional support to the teachers as well. So, we took that feedback and definitely integrated that into a pull-apart program this year where reading intervention and math intervention held separate kind of cornerstones in each grade level's schedule. And then, feedback that we received this year when we worked with lead teachers to receive feedback from all staff, what we heard was that it works well except for it's digging into our instructional time. So, that's when we did a deeper data review and said, how many students are we talking about that need support? And what's the best way that we can meet all of these potential conflicting ideas? And we recognized that teachers do better when they're given that full breadth of instructional time that they need to be able to do Core One instruction or Tier One instruction. And then, we were able to find a different block on the schedule to get math support, understanding that reading is embedded into the reading workshop model. So.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So, hopefully, that answers that question. So hopefully that answers that question.
It does. Yeah. I mean, I felt like that's probably what the win time was used for, so I just wanted confirmation of that and to find out if it was going to continue to next year. So that was a perfect answer to my question. Thank you.
Just a quick question about, you've mentioned a lot about reading, and I was curious is where we're slotting in grammar and vocabulary into our teaching and what we're doing to supplement that?
Yep. So it looks and feels different than it did when we were in school. And I know that people have different kind of mental images or personal experiences with how those lessons take place. So with spelling also, all of that is rolled into something called wordwork because we understand that students receiving those skills in isolation without the opportunity to apply them has led to, to some degree, a false sense of what students know and can do with it. They might be able to learn a spelling word on Monday for a test on Friday and regurgitate that. And even though that's definitely admirable, we want to make sure that the skills that we're developing have permanence and that they have long-term application. So there are a lot of research models around that that talk about the importance of embedding it into wordwork and making sure that it mirrors what we're doing in reading and writing and that students have the opportunity to apply that. So if you look at your child's schedule, it may not say that they have grammar from 9:15 to 9:45, but it's embedded in that work. And when we roll out our writer's workshop, you'll see more of that kind of coming to life as well. So right now, it's embedded in our developmental writing plan, but we're excited to bring about the writing changes in the next couple of years.
That was a lot of amazing information. Thank you very much for presenting all of that and explaining all of that. Very, very exciting, very important work. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope that's helpful to people so they can have a little bit more of a better understanding. Yeah, it's great. So thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to the wellness plan?
Yes. So every three years, we're actually required by DESI to revise and update our wellness plan and submit it to the state. So this year, we've put a team together to look at, review, and revise and update the school district's wellness plan. So the committee was made up of community representatives, administrators, parents. We had a student representative, Redardi, from grade six. So it was a pretty representative group that went through our current plan. And Director of Food Service, Teresa Veronzano, really did a nice job co-facilitating the group with me. And she really established, she looked at some different national standards and some model plans. And what we did through the process is we compared our current plan to a couple of different models. And then we made some revisions based on the model plans and recommendations from DESI. So the committee in total met five times, starting in November and finishing up in March. And really, I thought tonight would just be important to focus on the goals. So the entire plan's in your background for your review, but I was going to look at really the goals that were established by the committee, which are reflected throughout the plan. So first was develop lifelong skills and habits that focus on wellness as an essential part of a comprehensive learning environment. And really focuses on the idea that wellness should kind of be embedded everywhere in everything that we're doing in school. Second goal is create more opportunities for students to engage in physical activities to promote movement and exercise. And you know, some of the examples we have down there is recess, the win block, morning meetings, transitions, teams and clubs of fitness. And really, I think that one of the, our elementary school has many strengths. We run a wide range of comprehensive programs for students in our elementary school that I think is kind of a little bit unusual. I think that just the number of opportunities that we give students before and after school at that building is just tremendous. You know, obviously, those things are happening at the middle high school, but they're more traditionally happening at middle high schools. And so I just think that, but really, that a lot of those programming goes back to this goal, you know, create opportunities for students to engage in physical activities to promote movement and exercise. And then that's also happening throughout the school day as well. Support and promote balanced dietary habits that contribute to students' health and academic success. You know, so basically, you know, that's really through the work of our food service department and what we're offering students during the school day and what we're allowed to offer students during the school day. Promote safe and supportive schools for all students and staff. And really, some of the things that were kind of lacking in our program a little bit were some references to the staff and that the wellness plan should incorporate and discuss staff wellness and staff SEL and mental health. So we incorporated some of those pieces into the plan that weren't there before. Promote community and staff involvement in supporting wellness, saying that wellness needs to be a community activity. It's not just something that's taught in the health classes or as a separate curriculum that really everything that we're doing is going to push this concept of wellness for students, both physical and social emotional. And then the final goal was maintain a district wellness committee. The regulation actually says you are supposed to maintain a district wellness committee. So we put down that we would agree next year that this committee will become a standing committee that, you know, obviously will give people each year the opportunity whether they want to continue to participate. I told all the members at the last meeting that in September, next year, I'll reach out to them and say, do you still want to be part of the wellness committee and move forward and meet on a regular basis? And obviously, you know, we're collaborating with the schools. I helped develop professional development for our teachers, both in promoting wellness for our students and for themselves. So then our last goal was develop respectful and responsible citizens to the promotion of wellness. So those kind of highlighted areas are the established goals of the plan. And a lot of the specific information you're going to see throughout the plan, which I'm not presenting here tonight in its entirety, all tie back to these core goals of what we want to do as a school district in terms of learning wellness. There were a couple of updates in the plan that weren't present. Obviously, we've already, we've talked a little bit about farm-to-school agriculture. And so we actually added that into the plan saying that that is an essential component of wellness education. And we're doing some farm-to-school, both at the elementary school and at the middle high school. So we're excited about that and those opportunities that are growing. As I already mentioned, the addition of employee wellness for staff. And then there was not, the plan didn't have anything specific about physical education and physical activity. It didn't have a section that said, these are the physical activity opportunities that we offer throughout the district. So we added that in. And then we updated and defined the nutrition standards based on current guidelines and expectations. So, and here they are. I'm not going to read them for you. I'll leave them up on the screen here for a second in terms of what the updates were in terms of the nutritional standards. So we're excited. The committee voted to approve the plan at our last meeting and all of its updates. As I said, Teresa Veronzano, Food Service Director, did a great job in terms of setting the stage for us to revise the plan. And she'll be submitting our updated wellness plan to the Department of Education. And we're hoping that this committee, well, essentially hoping this committee will become a standing committee that is constantly looking at what we can do to improve wellness for the school community. I'll take any questions anybody might have about wellness plan.
Anyone have any questions?
I think it looks like you guys followed a really comprehensive process. I appreciate all the time and work that that committee put together. Does this need a vote by us?
This is not, this does not, does not need to be voted or approved by the school committee to go forward to the Department of Education.
Excellent.
What you did update this year, what we've so far voted in form to approve is our new wellness policy. And actually, the wellness policy through the policy subcommittee work we've been doing has actually been revised a little bit. And what the wellness committee did is we did take the policy that we've approved in form, and we've used that as the basis, saying that this plan should tie back and be reflective of that policy. So that was something we did do as part of the process of revising the plan, making sure the, you know, the plan matches the policy.
Excellent.
I'm going to go on upcoming events if that's okay, Elizabeth?
Sure. I'm assuming this is going, if it is not already, will be on our website in case anyone in the community wants to.
Yes, yep. So we will be adding the wellness plan to the website.
Great. Thank you.
And I'll just take a moment to put the events up. As I said, as usual, I'm not going to necessarily read through all the upcoming events for April and May. Well, I guess we should mention, we do have town meeting coming up next week. I'm sure maybe some people are going to miss that in the end as well. So we have town meeting here at the middle high school.
At a least kind of town meeting.
Six o'clock on April 11. A lot of MCAS testing. Something I will focus on that, maybe something we should think about bringing back is, on April 14th, grade seven, we have the BEAN 11 presentation. And BEAN 11 is a program we've run for five or six years now, and it's actually our captain's council basically runs a half-day workshop for our seventh graders, talking about being positive role models and how you can be an 11 in your life with the concept of.
Where did BEAN 11 come from? Like?
It's actually a, it is actually a national program. So it's, that you can access. It's actually, it's not even, we didn't even necessarily purchase the curriculum. It's just something that's available. It's out there.
Is it supposed to be like comparative to like a scale of one to 10?
Yeah. So the concept is on a scale of one to 10, you don't want to just be a 10, you want to be an 11.
Okay.
And just really promotes the concepts of, you know, teamwork and community and positive culture. And we think it's, as I was saying, that our captain's council runs the program as a half-day program for our seventh graders. So that's coming up.
That's great. That would be great to have them come and do a presentation so they can learn a little bit more about it.
And then we do have the MET showcase coming up on April 26. Our MET showcase this year is focused on hopefully being able to find some industry partners and internship sites for, I believe, 12 juniors who are looking to complete the innovation pathway in manufacturing, engineering, and technology. And to complete the innovation pathway in M E T, one of the requirements is that students have an industry-based internship, you know, an internship in the field. So having, you know, getting 12 students internships in manufacturing is a goal we're working to, and what we believe we're going to be able to achieve. But part of the focus of the MET showcase is to kind of highlight those 12 students and have people say, yes, I see the skills and the opportunities that these students can bring to my job site, and I want to have them come and intern for us next year. So hopefully to be able to build some internship sites off that. It's not necessarily open to the public, but we are inviting the parents of the students who are involved. We're inviting the committees certainly involved. Welcome to attend. And we are putting out a big social media push for all of our area manufacturers to participate. So if you happen to be an area manufacturer who is watching tonight's meeting, we would love to have you attend our MET showcase from 3:00 to 5:00, Elizabeth?
Yep, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on April 26. Can I also just really quickly give a quick shout-out of appreciation to the sponsors of that or the partnerships that are promoting that? So Massachusetts MEP, which is a statewide manufacturing group, the Plymouth Chamber of Commerce has been actively involved in our digital campaign, Flexo Concepts, our lead industry partner, and then Mass Hire South Shore. So representatives from each of those groups have been meeting routinely with us. And our digital campaign just launched on Monday.
So looking forward to that.
That's excellent. So super quickly, if there's a parent or a guardian or someone that's connected to a student that's watching, that could work for someone, that might be a good fit, who should they reach out to? Would it be Building Administration, Mrs. Cabral?
Any of the above. So.
Any of the above?
It would certainly be Dr. Erickson, Mrs. Cabral. They certainly reach out to them if they believe that they have partnership there.
Great. That would be wonderful. Thank you. It's great to see a calendar filled with so many exciting and fun opportunities. Well, I don't think the students would say MCAS would be fun.
Yeah, MCAS happens to be on the calendar. A lot of MCAS.
There's a lot of other fun things.
At the middle high school, basically, in the month from April vacation until the end of May, someone's taking some tests.
Yeah.
Whether it's MCAS or AP exams or
Yeah.
different types of things happening. So this is a quick, brief overview of the upcoming events.
Great. Thank you. So that takes us to recommendations from the superintendent.
Ron, memo first?
Hey, everyone. So you have a brief update from Beacon Hill. Not a whole lot going on in Washington right now that's related to education finance, but Beacon Hill's been pretty busy with education finance recently. We're at the end of the third quarter for the fiscal year. As I'm sure you heard, the governor signed the compromise supplemental FY23 bill, which is really exciting. That's typical for the end of the third quarter. Two highlights for education, obviously, the $65 million was extends the universal school meals pilot program through the rest of this year, phenomenal. In addition to that, $130 million to support SNAP, which is programming that is actually already in existence, but the funding level is intended to maintain the pandemic-level support for SNAP, which is something that a lot of school departments and municipalities have been advocating for with the state. What was also interesting, though, was Healy proposed another FY23 supplemental bill. You have the link there to the language, but in it she included two earmarks for FY24. What's a little unusual about that is typically you don't do subsequent fiscal year earmarks until that year's general appropriation is done, right? So it's a little bit unusual, but both of them are phenomenal for schools. So go Governor Healy, and thank you. The first is the $171 million, obviously, to extend that state-funded universal free school meals through next year. Sidebar to that, there's also some language within the supplemental budget that essentially charges DESI with doing some homework to determine what it would take for Massachusetts to join a few other states like Minnesota and a few others that have made this a permanent program. So there's lots of interest, a lot of support for this kind of program. And within the next fiscal year, DESI should have some report to the Board of Education to determine what that cost would be annually, what kind of logistics would be required. The other item is a follow-up to what we talked about back in, gosh, December, January, when we were doing the Carver budget. And that is statewide, across the Commonwealth, we're seeing about a 14% increase on tuitions to the 766 schools. Those are the private, out-of-district special education schools. That's extraordinary in terms of an impact. That has a challenge for Carver, a challenge for every municipality and school department and the Commonwealth. And so as part of this supplemental FY23 bill, there's an earmark for additional $75 million, essentially to help districts to offset that 14% increase in special education out-of-district costs. So waiting for more updates on that, but both of those are really good opportunities to support schools across the Commonwealth, Carver certainly included. If you look at the next page, you just have the end of the quarter, three warrants. You see them down to the penny for both payroll and expenses. A quick side note on your April 6th, that's a sign that the warrant hadn't been posted as of the date here, but will be posted next day or two. And I'll share with you the transfers for this month. So as always, you've got your FY23 budget down to the penny in every account. This is the end of the third quarter, so we're really coming to the finish line. And you're tracking great in terms of FY23. We're in good financial position. I will say, in general, one of the things that we have benefited from has been a really mild winter. And so your heating and some of your electrical costs have been saved because it's, we had a little bit of snow and only a handful of days that were sub-zero. So when you look at your transfers, I'll give you three brief themes, but as always, ask many questions you'd like about it. The first is just some unanticipated special education out of district. That's typical this time of year, so we have transfers to cover those costs, obviously. The second is we have had an uptick in unanticipated homeless transportation as well. So a number of students currently here in our community that are deemed homeless, those students require transportation to and from school continually. And so we have transferred to provide support there. And then lastly, we try to utilize some of the savings that you've had for your heating bills. And so you see transfers to support the installation of a traverse wall in the elementary gym, some repairs over at the middle high school, including some carpet for the office and the guidance areas, as well as a microphone update for the performance programs, the elementary and middle high school as well. We've got We've got them all right there. If you have any questions at all, I'm happy to answer anything regarding FY23 budget, any updates from Beacon Hill, or any new transfers.
So I'll only mention the, the traverse wall, because people say, what is, might say, what is that? So we are, we are going to be able to put a rock, a rock-finding wall in the elementary school gym. So it's going to go along the back wall. And so we're, we're excited about that opportunity. And then we're just excited about having the opportunity to do some repairs around the middle high school in terms of carpets and the offices and those types of things. I just wanted to mention the rock wall.
Yeah, that's great. It's very exciting. I'm sure the kids will be, I look forward to seeing the video that's presented to us from the beginning. No, that'll be highly entertaining.
We're going to hold a meeting there?
Oh, that would be great. Do a live demonstration? I like that, I like that idea. Team-building activities.
Thank you very much.
That would be great, thank you so much.
We would need a motion.
For the transfers?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented.
I will second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much for that detailed information. We greatly appreciate it. That brings us to school handbooks update.
So as part of our tiered-focused monitoring, we've talked about this a little bit, this, right now, we're part of, we're under our review from the Department of Education. Tiered-focused monitoring, as I reminded to the audience, it focuses on our compliance with civil rights and special education law. So as part of that process, they've actually asked us to update each of our student handbooks to reflect the new student discipline law that went into effect in November. So the law was actually passed at the end of August. Went into effect November 15th. And DESI is saying, for part of this TFM process, they'd like to see our handbooks updated before, prior to their arrival. We actually had some discussions about, we have a normal handbook process that we go through, where those revisions would normally take place and be brought to the committee in June. We're still intending to do that, so this is not a comprehensive review of the handbooks at the middle school, the high school, or the elementary school. This is just, it's really a compliance piece. And, and obviously, they've said to us, we'd like to see your handbook updated prior to our review, or otherwise we'll end up making it a recommendation for you. They said, instead of having it be a recommendation, why don't you get it done prior? So what happened is, I did ask the school district attorney to review our current language regarding student discipline and ask them to update our policies. So the policy that's in your background, it's actually 13 pages. I'm not going to present the whole 13 pages here this evening, which brings our, all of our handbook policies around student discipline up to date. But I do want to focus on the major concepts of the law that went into effect in November. So the key language changes are actually on the first couple pages of the doc, of the document, and I'm just going to go through them. I'm going to actually read some of it. So, "Prior to issuing exclusionary, exclusionary disciplines such as suspension, the principal or the designee shall consider the use of alternatives." And that was the key point in the law. The law was really intended to reduce suspensions across the state. You know, there's a concern that there are too many students who are suspended for various reasons. So they're saying, prior to a suspension, the principals have to look at alternatives. So I'll read from, from the actual law, and so this language actually comes from the law and it's embedded in our policy. "The principal, head of school, superintendent, or person acting as the decision-maker at a student meeting or hearing when deciding the consequences for the student shall consider ways to re-engage the student in the learning process and shall not suspend the student until alternative remedies have been employed and their use and results documented, following and in direct response to the specific incident or incidents." So basically, in more, in our schools, generally, especially at the middle high school, it's the assistant principals who are the decision-makers in terms of student discipline. And generally, same is true at the elementary school, it'll be the associate principals who are making those decisions. And so doing that prior to suspending a student, or having them be out of school, they have to consider, what can we do to re-engage the student in the learning process? And, but also have the student learn not to repeat that behavior. And so it's really, it's a restorative justice model, and it's requiring schools to begin to implement a restorative justice model. It does say there are instances where the student could be immediately suspended. So the next part of the language actually says, unless, "Specific reasons are documented as to why such alternative remedies are unsuitable or counterproductive, or in cases where the student's continued presence in the school would pose a specific, documentable concern about the infliction of seriously bodily harm or injury or other serious harm upon another student while in the school." So obviously, that's a pretty wide-scoping, you know, obviously, if you feel like this is any kind of a threat to others, you know, if a student poses a threat, they can be suspended from school without having to follow the guidelines of being, re-engaging the learning process and looking at alternatives. You also, you could say that, you can, specific reasons to document why such alternative remedies are unsuitable. And that can, that really, what that's really focused on, that's focused on the concept of, this is a student who might have continual habitual behaviors, that you've tried alternative remedies, and that's not being successful. So then at that point, you can consider suspending a student. The other piece I want to note here is, this does not exclude what's called an emergency removal. So under the current, under the current law, prior to this going into effect in November, I guess, so the previous law, I shouldn't say the current law. Under the previous law, what's still there in the current law, is that if the administrator makes a determination, it really ties it with number two, that the student's president in school presents a danger to someone. It's not even considered, it's considered what they, the language they use is an emergency removal. And a student can be emergency removed for up to two days. Because the, the discipline process is, has actually changed a lot in the last 10 years. There was another law that I believe was passed in 2016 or 2017, which revised the process for this emergency removal. So in essence, a student can't be suspended without having a hearing with their parents. Previous that, the hearing, what was called the hearing, the meeting, could just be between the student and the assistant principal, right? And the assistant principal could decide, I'm going to suspend the student because they did A, B, or C. Now the process actually requires, before that suspension takes place, that there's a meeting with the parents as well, except in the case of emergency removal. For some reason, you know, the parents can't get there, or it can't happen. The, the principal does have that broad discretion of, this is an emergency situation, I can emergency remove the student. And the same thing is true under these guidelines. So I want to be really clear with people that, you know, those things that could be real threats or real dangerous situations, with the school district is not losing its ability to suspend students. But clearly, the purpose of this change in the law is to have us as a school district, and not us, Massachusetts, you know, all school districts of Massachusetts, including us, consider or think about the impact of suspensions on students. And try to find alternative ways to, as we said, re-engage the student, but also not have them repeat that behavior. That kind of outlines them, alternative remedies may include, but should not be limited to mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, or collaborative problem-solving. "The principal, head of school, superintendent, or person acting as the decision-maker shall also implement school or district-wide models to re-engage students in the learning process, which shall include but not be limited to positive behavioral intervention and support models, PBIS, trauma-sensitive learning models, provided however that school district-wide models shall not be considered a direct response to a specific incident." So basically saying, you should have some programming to the works with students about making good decisions. And, and, you know, we've had a PBIS, we've had PBS programs both at the middle school, at, at high school, and at the elementary school. Obviously, the elementary school's done a lot of work around trauma-sensitive, being a trauma-sensitive school. So these are, these things are already in place. So we have those pieces of it. So the law, what I just read to is actually right from the law. And that's really the core of the change in what the handbook policy would be, would be putting this piece in. The other 13 pages, there's some minor changes, but they're really more preceded, they're, they're more grammatical procedural language. They're not necessarily the concept. This is the core concept that needs to be embedded into our student handbooks. And again, this new language applies to all suspensions. I will say, this does not apply to suspensions related to, and I think this is a key point for the committee here, for the community here. This does not apply to those suspensions related to a dangerous weapon, a gun, possession of a controlled substance, or assault of a faculty member. There's actually a different law, there's a different law that relates specifically to those three things. So if a, if a student had a gun or a knife, if the student was in possession of a controlled substance, if the student assaulted a faculty member, or there's actually a fourth one here, or the student is charged with or convicted of a felony outside of school, then you can suspend the student, and you don't have to use these pieces, you don't have to follow this restorative justice model. So that's a key piece as well. So I know that was a lot of information, and really, the concept is moving towards just being thoughtful about making decisions around suspending students. So I, I'll, there's a second piece here about meal language, which is much smaller, that DESI is also looking for us to put in. I'll show you that, but I'll, I want to stop here and take questions you might have about the student discipline piece.
So I hear a lot of feedback from the community about how they feel like the schools aren't strict enough on bad behavior, or they, the, the perception is that, you know, students aren't being disciplined, you know, hard enough, or, you know, enough to make behaviors change. So I guess my takeaway from this is that I like that more thoughtfulness is going in, but I think it's also really important for people to understand. Like, I've had somebody say, well, I can't believe they didn't expel that student. But I know going through the policy manual, pretty much expulsion doesn't really, it's not really an option anymore under the new laws regarding education. And I think many people in the community don't fully understand, like, how, how much discipline is governed by law. And I'm, I guess I'm hoping that this isn't perceived by some students as, oh, well, they can't suspend me, so like, a pass to misbehave. And I also hope that for our administration, that this, that these new laws don't make them feel, I, I guess handcuffed in a way in what they can do, but I'm, I also really trust our administration and, and hope that this will become an opportunity to really become, I guess, more engaged in how to get these students to be better citizens within the school. And, and, but like, I guess, I just wanted to kind of put that out there, because there's a lot of misconception over discipline in the schools and how, and, and then, of course, because of student record, you can't publicize how a student is disciplined. And so a lot of times the perception is nothing's done, when rarely that's the case. So I just, no specific question, it was just, I wanted to share.
And I, go, go.
I'm going to just piggyback on what Jen said, because I actually talked to a parent about this today. There is that misconception. One of the things that was helpful for me, it was when we were in the DEI committee, is that we did a whole section on restorative justice, and it helped me understand as a parent better how we're disciplining children. And I do tend to agree with these laws, and I think really what the issue in the community is, I mean, they don't always watch these meetings, I get that. But we have to find a way to get this out in very succinct pieces about what we do, what we don't do, to the community. One of the things I'm, I'm going to recommend here is maybe we have a special section in our, on our website that specifically outlines this. And I think I had talked to you about this before. I have seen other school districts do this. In particular, Cambridge has a very, very comprehensive section of their website that kind of covers all of this. And I think it is more about education, because if you're an old parent like me, which I am, you know, it was very different when I went to school than it is now when my daughter's going to school. So I didn't really understand how it was all happening. And I think a lot of parents do expect, oh, my kid's going to get detention, oh, my kid's going to get suspension when they act out. And because we're not doing that, they're thinking, well, we're not doing anything at all. So if we could find a way to advertise this to the community a little bit better and maybe get them engaged. I know that we've done presentations on bullying, but maybe we could do a parent presentation on this specifically, so that they understand where the law is, even if we just do a PowerPoint presentation or something. I think that would be very, very helpful for parents who don't necessarily understand where the school is coming from, what they can and cannot do, and how they can and cannot communicate certain things.
Right. Yeah, and also, I know some parental frustration that I hear is, is people feel like they want to know whatever discipline was given out to students.
Right.
And I feel that a lot of parents don't realize that that's confidential
Right.
information. So I think if we were to find a way to bring this, will this be presented to the students at all? Has there been any discussion about making them aware of the changes?
I mean, they've been made aware of the changes when they're involved.
I mean, yeah, as incidents arising, right?
So, but there hasn't, we actually had a discussion about that, of do we have like a school-wide assembly of this law is new? And I think there was some thought process of, we didn't also want to send the wrong messaging of,
Yeah, yeah.
Here's things we can't do. But, so that, that was, we were, we were thoughtful about that, that was considered. So I would say, at this time, students are learning about this if they are engaged in the process.
Okay.
But there's not been like a school-wide presentation of the change of the law that went into effect in November 15th. The very interesting part of the law was, this actually caught, I'll be honest, it caught most school districts off guard. Most people were really surprised. They didn't even realize this law has been passed. It was passed, it was tucked in as an amendment to a mental health bill. It really wasn't even about schools. The, there was a mental health bill about the wellness of people in the state of Massachusetts. And this was a, actually, an add-on to that bill that didn't get a hearing, so I, I was not contacted about this from the Mass Association of School Superintendents. Stephanie and I talked about it a little bit. The Mass Association of School Communities were not contacted about this. They did not attend public hearings on this. So there was very little educator input on this revision of the law. We just received a notification really towards the middle end of October, saying, hey, this law goes into effect on November 15th. So, you know, we've been, we've been thoughtful about that. And I also don't want to send the message that you can't suspend. Clearly, there's a lot of reasons you could suspend.
Right.
But it's not our first resort.
It's not, right, it's not, right.
It's not our go-to anyway.
And obviously, children aren't being educated if they're not in school, so I think suspension.
Well, suspension can be seen as a reward, too.
To some students, sure.
Like, it's, it's rewarding bad behavior.
Some students definitely do that.
It's, it's, I, I work with the population that this most affects, because the kids I work with can't attend public school. So hearing that parents don't understand, I get that. But they need to be in school. This law is to protect your child's education and every other child's education. And if a child is acting out, behavior is communication, they're telling you they need something, they just don't know how to say it. And so when a child is acting out and they're given a suspension or detention, you're not going to solve it, and you're not going to change the behavior. So this law, although difficult for the educators, and trust me, I know, is super beneficial for your students, and it's a good thing.
Yeah.
And you don't want anybody else to know your child's disciplinary problems. So I understand that parents are like, well, what's going to happen? But these laws are actually really good for your children.
And I, clearly, that concept of, every issues that, every issue or concern that's brought to us by teachers, you know, because teachers refer to us, our staff, parents, the community, is, is addressed, and parents are contacted. And so I, that, in my mind, that's the key message that needs to happen, is that, it's not like anything comes in and someone says, okay, that's not, I'm not going to do anything with this, or I can't do anything with this. You know, everything that's brought to our attention, we address, we deal with it, we involve the families, we involve the students, we work with students, students receive disciplinary consequences. We do some, we do some in-school suspensions, there's been some in-school suspensions at both buildings. You know, and there's still detentions, there's still Saturday school, there's still social probation, there's still, you know, so there's a range of, which are actually all laid out in the handbook, there's a range of consequences that can be given. And sometimes it is processing, sometimes it is a counseling referral, but that's part of the process as well, and it should be. It's really, It's really, the goal is for it to be a comprehensive response, not a singular response. Because in the big picture, that comprehensive response long-term, I believe, will be more effective than maybe a singular response of this behavior. So, any other questions? But I, I made some notes here about doing, going back to the admin team and having a discussion about doing some sort of parent presentation at each level to, you know, talk about some of these things and some of these changes. Just from an informational standpoint, I think would be really valuable.
Yeah, I think that would quell a lot of the community concerns, just to have an understanding of what happens in the building. Because, you know, we're exposed to it, but like, the general community isn't necessarily unless their child is involved in incidents. And so I think there's just a lot of misinformation out there.
Yeah, and they're certainly not reading, they're certainly not reading, you know, a hundred-page handbook either. So I'm just thinking an easier way to disseminate and this information for parents to digest it and understand it without having to go searching for it or going through the handbook.
And even the language I went over this evening isn't necessarily very friendly. Because I read to you from the law, but I tried to break it down. Christine Watson said something.
Go ahead, Christine.
Two things, one, not only do you not see the situation coming, you weren't providing the tools yet. So I will say, our administration has been working very hard.
Can I build off of that? Desi is actually, Desi has actually just, Desi has let us know that they, they do have guidance coming out with recommendations on implementation of the law, probably at the end of the year.
That's helpful.
And the law was passed, what, in the last year?
End of all, I guess.
Eight months later, yeah.
I was wondering, have we been talking a while about restorative justice? And are you asking me to come up with a campaign over it? If the teachers and students are intending to take the arts and principles with many workshops as possible this year?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's fantastic.
Because I have to say, when we talked about it in the DEI committee, it was eye-opening for me. And very, very helpful, very helpful. I just think it would be helpful for others too.
And not, I know, not for Ruby or Justin, Naomi on this party, but, but the, the elementary school, the elementary school has really already implemented a restorative justice model. That's, so the, the impact of this change in this law on the elementary school discipline is, is really negligible. There's very little suspension that occurs at the elementary level. And, but even that, some people may, in their own minds, either disagree with that or say that's not the way it used to be. But they, they've, this is something they've been working on for many years, including being at Thomas Institute of School, PBIS, Safe and Supportive, and Restorative Justice. And Ruby, you can certainly add to that.
But over the last year, you've definitely done some revamping of our, of our conduct in the handbook. We did it in the handbook and we presented it as the school committee. But it's just really, it, it's fascinating, it's very interesting, the restorative justice piece. I mean, I really do believe in it and I feel like our staff does as well. But it also has been a transition. And it is, it's, it's involved because you need to, at least me, in my philosophy, I want to be creative and I want to be fair and I want it to really matter and have an impact. So while you might need to come up with something really quickly that's gonna be effective, it does take some problem solving and putting your heads together and really knowing the kids. So, yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot to restorative justice. I think that it can be really helpful. But for us as an admin team and as our counselors, it, it takes like a village and the parents. We want to be on the phone with the parent and say, okay, let's talk about this. What is gonna be effective? And so it's that whole partnership cycle that's really important. And you want it to be meaningful and you want it to happen the very, that very day or the next day, at least the next day. But I get what everyone is, I get what the people are concerned about not knowing what's, what's happening. There's absolutely a confidentiality piece. When we're on the phone with parents and gardens, we do want to say to them, you know, we really want to connect with them and say, yes, I understand that you want your, to know. But when I tell them, listen, if it was your child and another parent was asking me for information about your child, I wouldn't give it to them and you know. And so I think it's definitely something I want to keep working with our families on so that they understand. But it all comes back to, I think, trust, which I heard you all say, you know, you talked about that earlier in the meeting. You, you trust your administrators, you know, we're doing a good job for the kids. You know, we're trying to work together and make it meaningful. And then, yes, we want the community to really understand that that's what we're trying to do in the school.
Well said, Ruby.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cabral, for adding to that discussion as well. It's very important, so.
Yeah, I'm sure this law coming out the way it did was extremely challenging and required rapid response. And, you know, from where, from where I sit, I think that, you know, the school has handled discipline issues fairly well this year. But I think, I think community, communicate, communicating with the community is really the missing piece. Because it's hard for them to see it.
Anything else on the discipline piece?
Nope.
Thank you, Scott.
No, thank you.
Meal, meal, meal will be a lot quicker. So meal modifications and child nutrition programs. So I put the language up here because it's more straightforward. So the U.S. Department of Agriculture Non-Discrimination Regulation, as well as the regulations governing the Children's Edition Program, has been issued, which, which clarify the school food, the SFAs, plus makes substitutions to regular meals at no extra cost for children who are unable to eat meals served because of their disability. So really, it's just saying that for some reason, whatever disability or food allergy or situation that you have that would allow you to not access school lunch, we have to provide a substitution or alternative for that. And that that needs to be stated in the handbooks. I don't know if I missed any big piece of that.
Every child needs to be fed.
Yep. It's something they can eat.
Something they can eat.
Based on their disability.
Yeah, I mean, you never know, somebody might need something where like their food has to be ground up or something, or, you know, whatever accommodations. It makes sense.
So my, my, so these changes, both of them, would go into all the handbooks. So it's the elementary, the middle school, the high school handbook. You know, my recommendation is that we have a motion, a vote to make those changes. And then we'll, then we'll update the handbooks, we'll update them online, we'll submit them to Desi for ITFM review.
Anyway, I will make a motion to approve the changes to the elementary, middle, and high school handbooks as presented this evening.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
School calendar. So attached is the proposed school calendar for next year. I've also put it up on the screen.
In the background agenda, it's like not accessible, but if you go into the drive, you can get it. So I don't know if you can change that, so.
So, Mrs. Russell, can you take a look at that?
Link in the background agenda is restricted.
It's a, you need to request access.
Yes.
Sorry about that. It was my April 4th. Nobody played any tricks on me.
Well, April 4th back, I was able to navigate through a manual.
And not that it's helpful, I also have it on the screen behind us.
I cannot turn my head back there one more time. I'm sorry.
So the proposed calendar for next year, we'd follow a similar format to this past year, with teachers having two full days of PD prior to the start of the school year. And, and students having two full days of PD, sorry, that's, I'm not making any sense. Two, two full days of PD for teachers. And then two days prior to Labor Day for students. So the PD days would be Monday, August 28th, and Tuesday, August 29th. Students would come to school on Wednesday, August 30th, Wednesday and Thursday, August 31st. Then we'd have four days for the Labor Day weekend. And then students would return again on Tuesday, the 5th. Roger, you have a question about that specifically?
Well, last year, there, a lot of people were very unhappy with the returning to the, you know, start of school before Labor Day. For several years, we were a post-Labor Day start. And I know that was because we moved a lot of our PD days up front. But I just wonder, I want to ask, what, what kind of monkey wrench would it be to just push back two days and have everybody return after Labor Day? Because I feel like the community in general really preferred that. I mean, there were some people that didn't care, but like a lot of people were really passionate about this.
So the alternate decision on the teacher, from our perspective, from the administration and the teachers' perspective, we surveyed our professional development committee, we talked to teachers about this. We actually did a survey about professional development at the end of the year. And teachers were struggling with doing the three days before school. They just didn't feel like, they prefer not having the three days.
I wouldn't suggest a change of the PD days, like why not make the PD days be the 30th and 31st and all the kids return?
From, from my perspective, the problem with that is last year. You have some snow days and you're gonna be going to June 30th.
Yeah, but that, I mean, right now, this shows the school ending on the 13th. So pushing it back would be Monday, the 17th. That still allows three more days that week with Juneteenth holiday. Very unlikely you're gonna have eight snow days pushing you to the 13th.
I don't know, last year we did. Last year, we went till like 29th, the 29th.
The 29th, I think the last day of school was June 28th last year. But I also, I also think, I also think that last year was particularly hard because we went to June 28th and then we returned before Labor Day. This year, we're gonna get out, unless things change, on the 16th. You're gonna have a full 10 weeks prior to Labor Day. I mean, ultimately, you're correct, you could do, we could, I mean, you could start. The only thing you would change in this is you would make the PD days Wednesday, the 30th and the 31st. School would start February on the 5th. And then the last day of school would be June 17th. The pro, you know, two snow days gets that Juneteenth day in there and also your June 20th. But that's, yeah, you could certainly do that. So you could sit on that for a while, we'll go through the other things here. I think people want to see the calendar, but you, you know, you have, there is no rea, you don't have to vote on this tonight.
I know you love issuing surveys, but what if you were to survey the community and say, would you prefer a before or after Labor Day start, knowing that your last day of school will change from this to this? And then table this vote to the next meeting on April 24th, taking into account the will of the community? Because I, I, a lot of people were not happy with the two days and then you have the four-day weekend. They're like, what's the point? Like, there's just, there was so much negative feedback when we switched from after Labor Day to before Labor Day that I'm just trying to be the voice of the community. I couldn't care less when my kids go back to school, but I heard a lot of complaints.
And maybe they would adjust.
I won't be hearing the complaints.
Anytime, anytime there's change and you do something different and that change has been put in. Well, let me look at, let me, let me go through, let me go through the rest of it. And ultimately, I, I'll do whatever the community wants me to do. If that's what you want me to do, that's what I will do. So, the only other things here on the calendar that's a little bit different is Veterans Day actually falls on a Saturday. Under state law, technically, we don't have to celebrate, it's celebrated on Saturday. It doesn't have, we don't have to have a day off. But historically, in the district, we've had the 10th off. I don't, I think it would be scary if you tried to add that as a day. I think you would get some negative input from the veteran community if you didn't take the tent. It's like Kelly, thinking, hey, we can add a day there, we can go on the tent and, and gain a day.
And most of us don't get it off. It's not a holiday in the business world.
But that's, that's certainly an option as well. There, yeah, the, the only, the only concern about that is within our custodial contract, they get the Friday off. So there would be no custodians on that day.
Well, and you're saying that is a PD day, right?
Uh, no, that's a day off.
No, that's a day off.
Oh, it's actually a day off.
And then there's no, next year, there, there's no election day next year.
Oh, that's the day.
So, we don't have the Tuesday and, we don't have the same week, right. So what we did is we moved the other teacher professional day to the Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend. So that would be a four-day weekend, the 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th of October. And then you wouldn't have those two days in November. And then the holiday break just falls perfectly because Christmas is on a Monday. So the 22nd would, Friday, 22nd would be a half-day and people would have January 1st off. Otherwise, it's pretty consistent with what we've done with past calendars in terms of half-days, parent-teacher conferences, all that stuff kind of falls the same way it naturally falls. And then we'll, just let me know what you want to do, if you want to table this and do a community survey. I will certainly do that. And then I would do a teacher survey as well. We talked about this, we did talk about this with, this was discussed with the professional development committee, was discussed with the admin team, was discussed with teachers. So I think you'd, I think you'd want to see the teacher responses as well. So I don't, if you do a survey, I would not only do parents, I would also do teachers, so you have that input.
For sure, because, and, and I think, yeah, the different perspectives for all, I mean, I, you know, and I'd be curious to see, do teachers think it's useful for kids to come in for those two days and then have a four-day break? Yes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or a gradual entry at the beginning of the fall, fall, or the school year is just that, to help students to transition back. So, so it's almost intentional to not have a full week. So I do, I would want for families to hear that, that we do see students having more transition and separation kind of anxiety and concern for a full week. So as the school's calendar progresses beyond that, we did really try to incorporate full weeks. Because then, once we do get started, it's really important for us to build that momentum with the kids. And we see that throughout the year. So we really tried to build full weeks in there. So yes, sometimes there might be a half-day, but it's still five days. So we tried to do that with this calendar a little bit. We looked very closely at that. But I really wanted to make sure that I pointed out that that beginning of the school year, especially for little ones, K through, K through five, we do look at, yes, there are two school days and then the following week, it's, it's the four school days. But we see that as an important part of transition for children. And it's very developmentally appropriate for them.
That's an excellent point.
Thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate that point.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You just changed my mind, Ruby.
So about.
Right? Yeah, I mean, I, that was, like, my mindset was thinking, right? It's, it's always hard to transition for a new year, especially when you're going to a new grade or can you go to first grade or those types of things. So I can, I mean, consider value in that transition.
I just needed something smart to be able to say to people when they got mad at me, well, why can't we have our full summer and go back after Labor Day? Well, so now I have something smart I can say to them.
But, I also.
It's not brought up that we're actually, we're getting out somewhat early, so we're gonna have a full tent.
So la, last week it made it hard, last year it made it hard.
Last year was a very short summer. It was extra painful.
It was literally, it was a little over eight weeks.
Yeah.
So that won't be the case this year.
Yep, which is great. All right, so with that, would.
Ruby, I don't know if you sold the deal, Ruby, I'll have to see what happens.
Ruby, Ruby, Ruby sold me, I have something, I have a rebuttal.
All right, so with that, does someone want to make a motion to approve the calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar for the 2023 and 2024 school year.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
For those that are angry, you can stay.
So we will public, we'll publicize the calendar starting this week. Because we, we have had some people asking about the calendar fix.
Plymouth approved theirs weeks ago and so we've been hearing about it.
You know, because they want to make their vacation plans, so they want to know when they're gonna go back to school.
Very true.
And so we will start putting this out. We ready, ready to go on to second meeting of policy, aye? Policy section aye?
Do you want it now? Yeah, we were just thinking, when are we gonna do it now? Are we gonna do it after policy? Are you sure? Okay, after policy, we're gonna take a, a quick break.
Okay, yeah, whichever you want, whichever you want to do, yeah. Okay. So this is the second reading of the proposed policies from section I of the policy manual. This is a fairly large section. And our last meeting, I kind of went through in detail all of the changes that we would be looking at. So my, I did that backwards, sorry. So since I took it out of order, so we're doing this, I, I'm losing my own mind. Second reading of I, and I didn't, I didn't update my own background, and the first reading is J. So second reading of I, we, as I said, we went through everything. So my intention right now, unless people want me to, is to not review all the changes again, because we didn't have any recommendations in our last meeting. So at the last meeting, there were no recommendations to do anything different, or look at anything from I differently. So the recommendation tonight would be to have a motion to approve section I of the policy manual in form, as presented this evening, or is in, as in your backgrounds.
I will make a motion to approve section I of the policy manual in form as presented this evening.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is running discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Section J is also a large section. Tonight is the first reading of section J. In many instances, the policy subcommittee recommendations recommends the mass updates, which were fairly minor language updates. I'll outline some of the key changes. No action is required tonight. We'll bring these back for a second reading at our next meeting. So section J, policy JA, student goal policy, we eliminated. There's actually several policies we eliminated in this section, really because they were either more procedural than policy, or they were a little outdated, or we didn't feel like they fit. So a lot of our policies actually, sections actually had a goal statement. And if you go back and look at the different sections, we, we eliminated most of them, because they were really outdated statements. And we had a discussion about, policy statements are necessary to have goal statements attached to them. So we eliminated those sections.
Yeah, if I can, I'll just add, our, our mask, Representative Jim worded it really well. He said, you know, your goals can fluctuate and change as your students change, as, you know, your different seasons, different, you know, outside influences that are happening. And so if you have those within your policy manual, you don't have to be updating your policy every time your teacher, administration, or community wants to set a new goal. You know, goals can be very specific, and they can vary year to year. And so it's really not appropriate to have it in the policy. And that made a lot of sense to me. So I just thought I'd share that with the greater community, as like, or as a, with the committee, just sort of like a thought process as to why we were okay with eliminating a lot of the goals, because goals generally should be very specific, and policy is not intended to be specific, but to be a broader guide.
Policy JFE1, school admissions, we are proposing to eliminate. Policy JFBBBA, admissions of students whose parents are non-residents, we vote to eliminate. I actually don't need this policy, because it relates to our school choice district, and we have school choice students here. So we don't, this talks about like, charging tuition for students who are not residents of Calhoun. But as a school choice district, it's not appropriate. Eliminated policy JIC, student conduct, and replaced it with MASC's policy JIC, which they called student discipline. Our student conduct policy was actually pretty outdated, even with the laws and revisions that went into place around 2015, 2016. So, and the new JIC student discipline is consistent with updated policy laws, some of what we spoke about tonight. Our policy JICA, student dress code, we eliminated. It's covered in our student handbooks, so we do have a student dress code. And, you know, Jim Hardy, MASC rec, said if, if you have that covered in your handbooks, it doesn't necessarily need to be a specific school committee policy. Policy JICC, our student conduct on buses, we eliminated, because it's actually, we viewed it as a procedure and not as a policy. Policy JICH, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. This is an MASC policy that we did not have, and we're gonna adopt this one. It's gonna replace two other policies, call, uh, policy JICG, tobacco used by students, and policy JICH, alcohol used by students. So we used to have two separate policies about restricting the use of tobacco and alcohol. This brings it all together with also drugs. So alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, that is prohibited, you can't do this in school, and all in one policy. Policy JJH, student late-night travel, is a MASC policy that we do not have, but we recommend adding, because it gives some specifics about the rules and regulations about overnight field trips, and late, and traveling late in the evening. Student travel regulations, policy JJHR, is an MASC policy that we do not have, but we also recommend adding. Policy JJIFR, athletic concussions, we recommend adopting this MASC policy. It's just more up-to-date with current protocols. So it's, it's a more updated version of our concussion policy. And then the last two policies, there were two policy around AIDS. So obviously, when the, in the, in the 1990s and early 2000s, AIDS was certainly a hot topic, and the school committee adopted policies around AIDS. So we had, we proposed to eliminate our two policies that are specifically related to AIDS, which is policy JLCCA and policy JLCCA E1, AIDS protocols. I don't know if you want to highlight any other ones, or, that's kind of what I went through and pulled out as revisions, or suggestions we had made for revisions.
Yeah, it was a, it was a really big section. We spent a lot of time going through
Multiple meetings.
Yeah. That, that section, that section took, well, we reviewed the final two sections as the subcommittee tonight, so, so we're almost near the finish line.
This, this one section took more than one meeting to review. And I would say, in general, the policies that we're recommending adding, most of them are actually required by law. So it's recommending adding, but like, really, we technically have to add them. And then a lot of the ones that we're eliminating either were outdated, or they were, like Scott said, procedural, covered by the handbook. So we were trying to keep in mind with the notion of like, the policies being, you know, that, that broad policy with which you derive your procedures from, but your procedures shouldn't actually be in the policy. Because we want to try to eliminate future committees from having to make frequent changes. Like, policies shouldn't have to be frequently changed. It should have to change if the law changes or something drastically changes, you know, within the school system. So trying to make this more simple for everybody.
All right, so we don't, there's no action required this evening. And we'll bring policy, section J, back to the committee at our meeting on the 20th floor. Do we want to do this last piece of hosting the manual?
Yes.
And then we'll take a break?
Yes.
So, you know, as we complete the process of review and update of the policy manual, we need to consider if we're gonna have the MASC host our updated manual. The initial cost to host the manual is a one-time fee of $3,500. The purpose of that fee is, they, they actually will make all the revisions. What they'll do is they'll take the revisions we've agreed to, and that we passed, they'll make all those revisions, they'll link all the legal references, they'll link all our policies. So on, they'll create a document for us that will have live links, that will all be updated, and that responsibility will come off of my office of having to do that. And then what we would do is, once that's completed, is we would just put a link on our website that brings it to there, where they host it. But that's why the one-time fee of $3,500 is the work to update this whole manual. After that, there's a $900 yearly fee for them to manage it. And what that would look like is, on a quarterly basis, MASC puts out suggested policy updates. So I think for us to stay up to date, what would make sense is that we'd have a quarterly policy subcommittee meeting, look at the updates they suggest. Some may make sense, some may not. And then all we have to do is, after the school committee votes to approve any updates, is notify them, and then they update the manual. And that, that would be just an ongoing process. So, you know, if we decided not to do that, if we don't have them host the manual, then we would just do as we have done in the past, in my office meeting, Gina. We would go through and update the policy manual and maintain it on the school district's website. But Gina and I talked about this a little bit. I mean, she said, we can certainly make everything live links. Like, we can make it look like they're gonna make it look. We have the ability to do that. It's just whether we want to pay someone to do that for us. So, you know, my recommendation is that we have MSA, MASC, MASC host the policy, updated policy manual as it's completed.
I guess for a purpose of discussion, I would say, I know the amount of changes that needs to be made, and even things such as changing everywhere refers to parents, to parents and guardians, everywhere refers to, you know, gender specifics to make it gender neutral, you know, changing, you know, you know, language to school district, like, all those, like, generalized changes, like, there's a lot of those changes, as well as detailed changes. There was a lot of things where, like, well, we're just gonna take this sentence and move it in. So I think there's a lot of extension, change, extensive changes, and I don't know that it's a good use of our office's time, when it's not that much money for them to pay. And I believe we have it well within our budget to absorb the $3,500 cost. So I would support, and I'll actually make the motion. I move that we have the Massachusetts Association of School Committee host our revised policy manual.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Clearly, there's discussion. Is there any, any, anything else that you want to add, Jen?
I have no additional discussion, but floor is open if anyone else has.
I just want to say, I think we're all, right, budget conscious, budget conscious. But I was thinking about, like Janet mentioned, all the work, initial work that would need to be done to bring all of these policies, and there are hundreds of them, dare I say. Do we, do we have a total policy?
I don't know if we have a total
I mean, I don't know if you do or not either.
I don't want to know the total policy, can I ask?
But it, it has taken hours and hours and hours and hours of, of our time to get it to this point. And my thought was, okay, is it worth having, you know, Gina invest her time in that? Or would, or would her time be better spent on sharing our story, right, and working on the communications piece for our district, which I think is really off to an amazing start? And then also, moving forward, if, you know, at some point Gina chooses to retire, it's a matter of, okay, is, she would be responsible for training whoever took over her position to maintain, if we were going to host it ourselves versus in this manner, we don't have to worry about ever ending up in this situation again, because we are going to make sure, right, that policy meets every quarter, and we do our updates. So we hopefully won't have to make this type of an investment in our district again. I'm sure all of us will be, you know, gone at some point. But for $900 a year, I just thought that it was short, short, short money, for the, for the amount of, of time that it would take to maintain it. So I just wanted to, to throw that in there. So, yeah, right, exactly. Right? I mean, and then, and I think it's really great that if you are reading a policy, and if you're curious about what the law is, I think it's great. You just be able to click on that link, and then you can go and see the law, and you can learn as much about it as you want, depending upon how passionate you are about that particular topic. But anyway, I just wanted to, to add that in. And I think it's a worthy investment. I'm thankful that we've taken the time to do this, making it to Jan and to Scott for all of the hours that we've spent going through this. And I'm certainly looking forward to adopting the entire policy manual. Anyway, that's it. So, anyone else? Okay. Again, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. It is unanimous. So again, thank you. And thank you, Gina, in advance for the work that you'll do with, with that time, with something else. Okay, so I think we will take a quick recess before we move on to reports from the school committee.
Yeah, and you should
You do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I just see a motion.
Okay, so someone please make a motion, so we can adjourn.
I'll, I'll make a motion for a brief adjournment to reconvene at 9:30.
Second.
Perfect. Should we roll call this?
No, I don't think it's actually a roll call, it can just be
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you back at 9:30. For the record. For the record, reconvening 9:34 PM. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the school committee, and we're going to start with superintendent's evaluations.
All right.
And there's my ex copy. So everyone has their template. I know everyone was emailed, given access to the tribe where the evidence was listed. Do you want to go through this, Scott, or do you want me to, do you want me to start?
I, I can give you a general overview, but yes, I think you should take everybody through it. Do you want the judge's general overview?
Yes.
Yeah, so in the big picture, superintendent, or myself, needs to be evaluated on four standards, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Each standard has several indicators. As part of the evaluation process, the chair will go through each indicator of the four standards. Each member will have the opportunity to give a rating on each indicator, and then the standard overall. And then I think this will go back to, so you're looking at each indicator, give you a rating on that indicator, and then looking at the balance of the indicators under a standard, give you a rating for the standard. And the rating choices are unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. And then also the three goals. And the goal, the ratings for the goals are, did not meet, some progress, and met, are the three options for the ratings on the goals. I don't know if that was a good enough explanation of the, of the overview. And I think that the whole thing will go back to this evaluation subcommittee, who will, you know, to finalize the document.
Correct. We will put, we will put together the final report.
I don't know if you want Gina to keep a track of everybody's votes on the ratings.
Yes, I, I, I shall do that. So I think typically, in the past, oh, that was in a different stage. So did, I want to make sure that everyone had a chance to review the evidence. And if there's any, if anyone wants anything, you know, further explained, if you have some questions for, you know, Mr. Neef, for any of the goals, you can certainly ask for some more information. Mine printed out differently than that one did, so bear with me. I'm just gonna try to reconcile this. And I don't think, did we get any responses electronically? Okay, so I will do my best to keep track of what everyone's answers are. But does everyone, is everyone okay with Kelly and I collecting your paper copies when we're done? That way I have it, because I want to make sure clearly that I record everyone's responses correctly. So, yeah, if you could just put your name on them, and then if you haven't marked it, you could mark it. That would be great, because I'm, when I printed mine, mine printed out in, with all of the, the description and the evidence. So like, mine printed out, it's a little bit longer. So I was able to go through and read things side by side, and then make my, my determinations.
Do you need Gina to track it, or if you're, if you're gonna collect everybody's form, then?
Yeah, I know, it's, it's fine, Gina. Don't, I didn't say don't worry about it. I'll collect, I'll just, I figured I would just have everyone, I'll have, I'll have everyone just right there, and then I'll just
Retire tomorrow, and then relax.
Retire tomorrow, and I don't need to take the notes. Right? Okay.
You're welcome.
Right? Okay, so we will start with
That's our standard?
You need to for the minutes, and that's about it. Right, yeah. Standard one for instructional leadership. Does everyone want to go through each section, or do you want to give me your overall ratings? Because we typically, we've typically go through each one of them.
I think we should go through them.
Okay.
Just for public purposes, for anyone who's watching.
I didn't know if you wanted to do the goals first, because I think the goals come first in the document.
They do.
The first page?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the document goals to come before the indicators.
It's just so confusing to me.
It is ridiculously confusing.
Well, see, ADHD medication.
My goals on my sheet of blank.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I have
I have them, I have them on my, on my printed one.
I have it up on my computer. I have it up on my computer.
So do you want to present your goals, Scott? Or do you want me to present them? You'll present them?
So my, my opinion, I will, I'll do what you, obviously, I'll do what you want me to do. But my thought process would be that if people have questions about anything, ask. But otherwise, just go through and.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's my, that's my opinion. Because if I, if you're gonna have me go through this document, we're gonna be here for a long time.
Correct. Okay, so it's just weird how mine.
All right, so professional practice.
Okay, so yeah, so the professional practice goals. So does everyone want me to read the entire goal? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So in order to foster positive and strong relationships with the community, I, meaning Mr. Neef, will work with the Director of Marketing and Communications, the Administrative Leadership Team, and teachers to effectively market and celebrate the Carver Public School and the community as measured by a review of a range of communications throughout the school year. Engage the community. Key actions: Establish the position of Director of Marketing and Communications. Establish a brand kit for the Carver Public Schools. Have the website become the main source of communication and information for the Carver Public Schools. And regularly push out information to avoid, to social media platforms throughout, through the website. So that is professional practice goal one.
Okay, so are we filling it out on the third page and the first page?
Yes. Yes. So there's individual, and then you do a summary for that.
Yeah, so there's, I think there's, is there three, three practice, three professional practice goals? Or is there just one?
So there's one, there's one professional practice goal.
Okay.
One.
District improvement.
District improvement goal and one student learning.
So I think you could just fill out the front sheet. You don't have to fill out the actual, you don't have to have comments. All right, so.
Okay. Well, but, yes, okay. So, so for professional practice, I will just, I don't have to roll call.
Yeah, so my, my recommendation is whoever wants, whatever you decide to go first, and you just go down and people give their rating.
Okay, so.
So you can lead off, Stephanie. You can have someone else lead off.
Okay. So for professional practice goal one, my rating is significant progress. That was mine. So.
I would say met.
I'm met.
Okay, so moving on to district improvement goal. In order to ensure that meaningful progress is made on critical district and school goals, I will work with principals and other district leaders on effective implementation of the educator evaluation process for all staff as measured by a review of summative evaluations. Enhance teacher and learning. Key actions: By October 6, 2022, hold goal-setting meeting with all administrators. By the end of February 2023, complete formative evaluation conferences with each principal and district level administrator as needed. Work with district and building administrators on effective implementation of the evaluation process for all staff. Regularly conduct school and classroom visits with school administrators. By July 30, 2023, complete summative evaluation reports for principals and district level administrators. I also had significant progress as we have not reached July 2023 yet. So.
I have significant progress as well.
Katie?
I said met because.
That's fine.
I, with the assumption that.
That'll be finished.
Yeah, it would be done since you've gotten everything else done.
Okay. And Colleen?
I mean, I don't know how I'm supposed to know any of this, but.
There's, there was. Yeah, there was evidence in the folder. And then if you look at, in the online version, Scott put documentation to say, like, like his, like, so in this one, he said, you know, this year we have made the evaluation process a focus for the administrative team. In the fall, I held goal settings meetings with all the administrators in the district. I held formative evaluation meetings. I visited classrooms on a regular basis. You know, so he kind of documented what he did.
And then I tried to put, for each thing, I tried to put in two pieces of evidence. Not necessarily, you know, not all the evidence, but two pieces of evidence to support that standard or.
Now, with the fact that it's not July yet.
That's why I said significant progress because it isn't, his goal isn't completed yet.
Okay. So if we were doing this, you know, evaluation after July date, okay. Significant.
Correct. Kelly, what do you all say?
I had significant progress.
Okay. Sorry, I missed it somehow. I apologize. Okay, so that brings us to the student learning goal. In order to have 70% of students meet or exceed their individual growth target established by the spring of 2022 assessment of the measures of academic progress, MAP, during the winter assessment, I will work with the administrative leadership team and teachers to analyze the data from the fall assessment to identify student areas of weakness and to modify instruction to support student growth as measured by the spring MAP assessment, teaching and learning. Key actions: Set up professional development for teachers and administration in interpretation of the MAP assessment. Support the new reading curriculum at the elementary school. Administer the fall assessment. Set up data meetings to review the results with teachers. Administer the winter assessment. Review winter results.
So I have significant progress on this one.
Yeah, I was sorry. I was, I didn't, I didn't do my front page. So I also have significant progress. Katie or Colleen?
Significant progress.
Colleen?
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. I didn't slip mine. I shouldn't have done that. I have time.
I mean, it seems to be outlined that those will open that side. I was saying that.
Okay. Move on to assess performance standards. Standard lines and different, set in lines just. I don't know, mine printed out differently for some reason. Okay, so under instructional leadership.
Can we go back to the first page? Is that what you did?
Yeah, again, are we just filling out the first page?
Well, for each of the standards, there are like subsections. So there's, you know, there's IA and then IB, IC, ID, IE. So there's individual ratings for each one of those, which would then lead to an overall rating for that category.
Right, so the overall rating is on the front.
Yep, so the overall rating is on the front page, which you should sum up from your individual rating. That should be at the end. So, so, sure.
All right, so.
So I think there's just, the cover page is creating confusion for.
Correct.
The cover page is just a summary of what you do at the end. So you should really, my thought process should be in.
We shouldn't even look at the cover.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's going through the easy, yeah.
Stop here on page four.
The performance on.
One A. And just go through.
There.
And then at the end, you can go back and put on the cover page if you want. But the cover page is like a, the first page is a summary page.
Yeah, right, correct. Yeah, that's where we'll take everyone's rating.
Right, and give the official ratings.
And then, if anyone wants to send us comments, we can include it on that, on that section as well. So you should be looking through IA curriculum is the first one. We'll start and go through.
So we're beginning on standard one, instructional leadership. 1A curriculum ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standard-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. My vote's proficient.
My vote was also proficient.
I said proficient.
Proficient, yeah.
Do you want to do this section? I'll do the next section.
Yeah. 1B, instruction ensures that practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work. Engage all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness.
Proficient?
Proficient.
Proficient. 1C, assessment ensures that all principals and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growth, and understanding and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning.
Proficient. I also had proficient.
Proficient. 1D, evaluation ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. I had proficient.
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 And IE, data-informed decision-making uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district, and school assessment results and growth data to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness, and student learning.
Proficient.
Proficient.
All right, so that takes us through that first section. So then it is section two. So superintendent's performance rating for standard two, management and operations. My apologies, I'm just gonna flip to my, there we go. Nope. Okay, so 2A, environment develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, and social needs. I had proficient.
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 2B, human resources management and development implements a cohesive, cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction, development, and career growth that promotes high-quality and effective practice.
I had proficient.
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 Proficient. Okay. 2C, scheduling and management information systems. Uses systems to ensure optimal use of data in time for teaching, learning, and collaboration, minimizing disruptions and distractions for school-level staff. Proficient.
Proficient.
2D, law, ethics, and policies. Understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, and ethical guidelines. Proficient.
I have exemplary on this one. Nice.
Okay, so 2E, fiscal systems. Develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, and goals. Allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school-level goals and available resources. I had proficient.
I had exemplary.
I did as well. I'm exemplary.
I also had exemplary on this one.
Proficient.
Okay, and that takes us to superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community engagement. 3A, engagement actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school district, and community. I had exemplary. I also had exemplary.
Exemplary.
3B, sharing responsibility. Continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community.
I had proficient.
Proficient.
I also had proficient. I'm sorry, Colleen, did you give a rating?
I'm proficient.
Okay, sorry, just didn't hear it. 3C, communication engages in regular, two-way, culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance.
I have needs improvement because I wish there was something between needs improvement and proficient because I feel like significant progress has been made in this area, but I feel like more progress is still needed.
I agree completely. I really wish that there was a midpoint category because I think there really has been significant improvement in the district-wide communication. But I feel like we still have a little bit more to go. So I concur with your sentiments and needs improvement.
Yeah, needs improvement.
Yeah, this is one where there really needs to be a three, like, on one to five with a three.
Yep.
Agreed. Colleen, I'm sorry, did you give a rating?
Needs improvement.
Okay. And then that brings us to 3D, family concerns. Addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner. I had proficient.
Proficient.
I did too.
Actually, I have exemplary on this one.
Okay. That brings us to standard four. Superintendent's performance for professional culture. Do you want me to read this one to give you a break? Sure, go for it.
I just feel bad to do another reading.
There it is. It's the problem. Go right ahead, Jen.
All right, professional culture. 4A, commitment to high standards fosters a shared commitment to high standards of service, teaching, and learning with high expectations for achievement for all. I have exemplary here.
I have proficient.
I have proficient.
Proficient.
Cultural, oh, sorry.
Exemplary.
Cultural proficiency, 4B. Ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected.
I said exemplary.
I have proficient.
I also have proficient.
Proficient. Proficient. I mean, I don't, is she still taking it down? Or are we gonna give her?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna take it. Yeah.
It has to be a public vote anyway. 4D, continuous learning. Develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members.
Communication, right?
Oh, sorry, skipped one. 4C, communication demonstrates strong interpersonal, written, and verbal communication skills. I have proficient.
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 4D, continuous learning. Develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practices, and use student data, current research, best practices, and theory to continuously adapt practice and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his or her own practice. I have proficient.
I also have proficient.
Proficient.
4E, shared vision successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor.
Proficient.
Proficient. And 4F, managing conflict. Employ strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict, and building consensus throughout a district or school community. I'm gonna, I have proficient.
Yep, proficient.
Proficient.
Okay, so that brings us through all of the sections and the ratings, and then Kelly and I will meet as the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. And as part of that process, as part of one thing I want to, yes, please, thank, did you write your name? Just write your names, I make sure I have everyone's, I can keep them straight. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. One of the sessions that I attended at the NSBA National School Board Association was a session that was on the superintendent evaluation. So I have some things that I would like to discuss and explore. I think that, I know Desi has, you know, like a model for us to follow, but I think there's some value in some of the assessments interviewed at this other district that I would like to, us to discuss because I think it would be more helpful for, I think, Scott and for us to have more frequent conversations. So we can, I think, have a better handle on where things are going, where progress is being made. So that's something that I will share, and then I'll have to see what the process is to implement that and make sure that, you know, we have that discussion with Scott and with the committee and see how everyone wants to move forward, but I think there's I think there's some, some room for this to become more effective and more helpful to us, to any school committee member in Carver to have a better understanding of where all this data comes from and really how it impacts the district. And I think it would be great for Scott to, to get more frequent feedback from us and to have more interaction about, you know, the work that he's doing in our district every day, so.
Absolutely.
A little bit of sense I'm going to add to that, so thank you, everyone, for.
And I, I don't have these comments written down, but I will verbally provide them that. I think that the job of superintendent is often a thankless job, and it is, it, you couldn't pay me to do your job. I think that we as a district are very fortunate to have you as our superintendent. I think overall that you are very proficient in your role. I think that the amount of dedication you have to our community exceeds that of most in other communities. And I think that people don't realize the amount of hours and time that you pour into our district and the level of dedication that you actually give our district. I think a lot of that is unseen, and it is quite thankless on your end. So I will do my part to say thank you for your time, dedication to our district. I think that the staff and students at Carver are very lucky to have you as the leader of the school district, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate those comments, and, you know, I, I've been in Carver for a long time, and I really take a lot of pride in this community. I love working in Carver, and I thank you.
Yep, absolutely. I second that. We are, Carver is, is very, very, very fortunate. It was great to see, I have to say, Scott at the airport with all of the students that were heading to Orlando for Grad Bash. It was great to see that level of interaction in person, all the excitement and anticipation of fun, so. I think we're fortunate in that I don't think many superintendents would take time away from their families to, you know, to attend a trip with their district, and you're going on too. So, which is great, so thank you for also having that, you know, level of connection and commitment to staff and to students. I think it's exciting, and we're fortunate, so. Thank you. Okay, so.
I guess just general reports from the school committee?
Yeah, that, I want to say that, I'm just making, I just wanted to, sorry, I just wanted to quickly read, make sure I, I met everything there, so yes. So we will go into regular reports from the school committee if anyone has anything that they would like to add or to share.
I would like to request to go last.
Absolutely. I mean, I started, I can, I can just continue speaking. So at our, at our next meeting, I'm going to put together a little presentation, some slides I'll share with Scott so I can talk a little bit more about the National School Board Association Conference that I just went to. I have lots of best practices that I brought back that I would like to discuss with the committee to implement and adapt and adopt. I think, you know, for me personally, this past year, I have learned so much, and I want to continue that. I think it's important for, you know, everyone to evolve and be open to new ideas and try to think, move things forward. And I think we can be a much more effective committee if we start doing regular retreats and start doing self-assessments and start really looking at, you know, what goals do we want to accomplish in the upcoming year and really work towards accomplishing those. And so it involves, would involve professional development for the committee, having retreats on a quarterly basis. I really want to try to bring us to that next level. I know everyone's busy. This year was a little bit more difficult because we had policies, so that added a lot more meetings to our schedule, so it kind of hindered some of the progress that I had hoped to make between then and now, but I will have more information about that in our next meeting. I'm just, I'm grateful for the opportunity to travel to Orlando and meet educators from across the country. There were over 3,000 people. And it was really great to see some people I had met in DC, to see them again, and to bring back some takeaways that I think will really benefit our district, so. I hope everyone has a fun break for April. I hope, I hope everyone doesn't get too stressed about MCAS. I know my, my, when my kids were younger, they always used to get worried about it, and I really hope that parents and students will not spend too much time worrying about it. It's just an assessment to see where you are. And just try your best, and that's, that's all anyone can ask, so. Looking forward to spring, I think like everyone else, so. Anyone who would like to go next?
I will just say that it was super awesome to hear from the, oh, it was, it was great, mock trial students. I, as Mr. Meeve notes, I love a good academic challenge and an academic team. I've also just really enjoyed being able to get involved with student projects. I helped Mrs. Kramp with Oyster Cats, and. I think my favorite part of being on the school committee is, is getting to see our work in action. And getting to be on the student advisory committee and getting, and having these chances to volunteer for the community of our students. That has just been wonderful and exciting, and I'm so proud of each and every one of them. And I hope everyone has great MCAS and great vacation, and I am proud of all of them, of our students.
Here, here.
That's awesome. Anyone else?
I know, we don't have to say a lot, but. Well, it's 10 o'clock at night, and, you know, everybody's probably gone to bed at this point, but I do want to say thank you to the staff, the administration, and to all of our teachers for their dedication to our students. You guys, MCAS has been mentioned several times coming up next week, so good luck to all the students. Try not to stress too much, as Stephanie said. And I really appreciate the clarification tonight about the discipline. I think that will be hugely helpful for the community going forward. And just super proud of our mock trial and Izzy, that's fantastic. And as everybody has said tonight, great things are happening in our district every day. We have made a lot of tremendous improvements, I think, and we're moving forward in the right direction. And I'm very, very happy to see it. Have a great vacation, everyone, and happy spring. Hooray.
All right, and I'll close this out. So this is my last official school committee meeting. I have two subcommittee meetings left this week and town meeting next week. I want to encourage all of our citizens in town to attend town meeting. This is your chance to have a voice. You vote the budget for not only the school but the town. There's a lot of articles that have really important data, so please, please attend town meeting. I want to take this opportunity to thank the town for electing me three years ago and entrusting me in this process. Being on the school committee has been an eye-opening experience. There were many things that previously I, I had, I thought I knew how things operated, and I quickly learned that things are not always as they seem. There's so much more that happens to have our districts operate smoothly and seamlessly and so many hours of hard work. And, and I, I'm thankful that I had this opportunity to gain that lens, and I will now and forever view school operations in a whole new light, and I will forever wonder how large cities do it because we only have two buildings. I know the work it takes to have Carver operate. I want to thank the administration, staff, and teachers that have come and presented to us, that have answered my, I'm sure tedious questions at times and, and humored me when I needed to be humored with things that probably weren't related, but I made them related anyway because that's what I do. But I just want to say thank you for everybody and to my fellow committee members that are continuing on. You know, I appreciate your time and attention to our district. I appreciate your care for our students and know that I may not be sitting at this table, but you will still hear from me because I will still be a very active parent in the community. And with that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this open session and move to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to not reconvene in open session.
I will second.
Okay, we, yes, that is a rule call vote, so we have. Kelly, Nimi, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Great, thank you, thank you, Jen, thank you, everyone. See you on April 24th.